Good morning. Today is February 7th, 2022. I'm calling the Municipal Services and Property Committee to order. Madam Clerk, can you please call a row?
Bishop?
Here.
Mooney?
Here.
Harrison? Jones? Casey?
Present.
Stott?
Present.
Mr. Chairman, for...
Thank you. First, we're going to move to, just to give everybody a quick rundown about what we're going to do this morning. We're going to do our legislation first. We only have about four or five pieces. And then we're going to move to our snowplow presentation. All right, Director?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. With me today is a...
Hold on, hold on.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, ordinance number 1189-2021 by council members Conway, Bishop, and Kelly to amend Section 13 of Ordinance Number 753-2021 passed September 20th, 2021 relating to apply for and accept a grant from the Cleveland Foundation for the development of the African-American Culture Gardens. Okay, Director?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This legislation will allow us to apply and accept a grant from the Cleveland Foundation to develop the second phase of the African-American Culture Garden in the amount of $175,000. They are still in the process of raising additional funds to start that second phase. Hopefully, that second phase could be started sometime in the spring. So we ask for your acceptance and approval to accept this grant and expend this grant.
Okay, Director, how much is this grant that we're going to receive?
Mr. Chairman, it is in the amount of $175,000.
Okay. Okay, it's a long time coming. I'm glad to see us finally move and get this second phase. Okay?
Yes.
All right, is there any questions from my colleagues on ordinance number 1189-2021? Councilman Casey?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Chairman to the Director, how much was Phase Two and when do we expect the garden to be completed?
Mr. Chairman to the Councilmen, Phase Two, I do not have the drawings yet for Phase Two. This is just the except portion. The first phase was in the amount around $500,000 to $700,000. I'm sure the second phase would be in that same amount. They're continuously raising funds for this second phase. So this is just a portion of what they will need to do the second phase. Oh, Mr. Chairman to the Councilmen, we've been, for 20 years, we've been doing this. And so it's now coming to fruition, the fruition that we're starting to build. As you see, if you go past Down Martens, can you see the first phase and then the second phase? The original estimate for the construction was about $2 mil. So I'm not sure where they're, you know, how much they've raised so far, but I can get that information for this.
All right, if you could just let us know when the completion date is set for. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right, is there any more questions on ordinance number 1189? All right, seeing no more questions on ordinance number 1129, ordinance 1189 stands approved. Ordinance number 1147-2021 by council members McCormick, Bishop, and Bracatelli by departmental request. This is an emergency ordinance authorizing Director of Capitol Projects to issue a permit to CCA CBD Cleveland LLC, 328 South Jefferson Street, Suite 570, Chicago, Illinois, 6066-1, to encroach upon the public right-of-way of Euclid Avenue by installing and using approximately 12 micro piles as necessary subsurface support for the foundation of the, for a tower crane to be installed in the construction of the City Club Apartments project at 776 Euclid Avenue in Cleveland, Ohio. All right, Director, and Director, congratulations on your new position. I just want to say that.
Thank you, Chairman. It's interim, but I appreciate that. Thank you very much.
Okay, all right.
Mr. Chairman, so as you mentioned, this is to award an encroachment permit to allow for the tower crane to be placed in the public right-of-way for the construction of the City Club Apartments. The City Club Apartments will be just to the west of the City Club of Cleveland, and it'll be a new apartment structure of 304 apartments and penthouse units with residential amenities, restaurants, and commercial space. This tower crane will be temporary. It'll be subject to the encroachment or the construction permit during construction of the City Club Apartments. Once the crane is removed, the micro piles, which is what gives it its support, will be severed and remained in place below grade. We do have consent from Councilman McCormick, and we're happy to answer any additional questions Council may have.
All right, Director, can you briefly give us a synopsis about what is a micro pile?
I'll defer to Manager Swetowski.
Okay.
Thank you. Micro piles is a methodology to provide support to the foundation of where the crane's going to sit. They're basically installed with an auger, how, logger drilled down. I think these are about 100 feet deep. As the auger is withdrawn, grout comes out of it, and then as it comes closer to the surface, there's rebar put into it, and then the pad, about eight-foot-thick pad, is then on top of that, and that's where the crane, the tower crane is then attached. And there's 12 micro piles.
So in essence, this is a safety mechanism for the crane, for the safety of the work?
It's the foundation of the crane.
Okay, all right, great. We need this in place, for sure. All right, any questions on ordinance number 1147? Any more questions? Councilman Brian Casey, Mooney, I'm sorry.
That's all right. Just a question, Mr. Chairman. Why does, why does this come to council? Why, for a permit, why does that come in there? Why is it necessary?
Mr. Chairman of the Councilmen, so anytime someone has a use within the right-of-way, they need to come to us for an encroachment permit. So they need a construction permit to, through building and housing, for the work on their own property. But this encroachment permit has to come through the, through City Council because we're giving them a grant of use of the city right-of-way.
Anytime there's an encroachment permit?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Yes, yes.
All right, thank you, Councilman Mooney. Councilman Brian Casey?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman to the Director, the right-of-way, will the sidewalk be blocked at all? Because I know we recently passed legislation where if you're doing construction downtown, that the right-of-way has to stay open or an alternative has to be given for pedestrians or individuals in wheelchairs, et cetera. So is this going to block that? And if it is, will there be an alternative for pedestrian pass-through?
Through the Chairman of the Councilmen, again, I'll defer to Rick Swetowski.
Through the Chair to the Councilmen, yes. Actually, we have our inspectors looking at it almost on a daily basis. They're right now have their, what's called maintenance of traffic up because they're doing some work at this point. So the, there's one lane blocked at this point in time, and that's basically the footprint of where that, what they'll occupy. There are alternate pedestrian routing to get people across the street so that they have access and they can move freely around.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right, thank you, Councilman Casey. Councilman Joe Jones?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Is there any cost to the city or just granting the permit?
Through the Chairman of the Councilmen, no cost to the city, just granting the permit.
No further questions. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right, seeing no further questions. What ordinance is this? Let me give that. Ordinance number 1147 stands approved.
Can I go back upstairs?
All right, ordinance number 1059-2021 by council members Bashir Jones, Harrison, Santana, Spencer, Bishop, Bracatelli, and Kelly by departmental request. This also is an emergency ordinance authorizing Director of Public Works and Community Development to enter into a property exchange agreement with the Board of Education of the Cleveland Metropolitan School District for the transfer of various properties between the parties to facilitate the efficient use of real estate for public purpose, including constructions, constructing of new parks, assembling land, improving existing school campuses, and disposing of underutilized and unneeded real estate. Authorizing the Mayor and the Commissioner of Purchasing Supplies to acquire and convey the properties and authorize the conveyance of one of the properties received from the school district to Kenmore Commons Limited Partnership or its designated for future developments. Okay, Director?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I defer to interim Director DeRosa, who's also Commissioner of Real Estate.
All right, double hats.
Yeah, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, so for many years, we've had a good relationship with the school district. And one of the things we've been working on is how to better utilize properties between the two parties. And so oftentimes, we come to City Council with what we call a land swap between the school district and the city. And typically, the city properties that go to the school district are land bank properties that they need for future projects. And typically, the land that comes to the city are various properties that we've identified as a need for the city or for economic development. So what we have here is the exchange of properties between the two parties. The two parcels that come to the city are a portion of CMSD's Daniel E. Morgan School, which is located at 8912 Morris Court. The parcel that comes to us is really the backyard of the school and the backyard of what's called the Kenmore Commons Low Income Housing Tax Credit Project. And so the school district has agreed to kind of square off the backyard and transfer 3,440 square feet of their property to the city. And then this ordinance also authorizes us to transfer it at the cost of $200 to the developer of this low-income housing tax credit project. The way the $200 came up is that that's our typical amount for a backyard expansion, and that's how we consider this little piece of CMSD's property. The other parcel that comes to us is in Ward 10, and this is the former Forest Hill Parkway School, which was located at 450 East 112th Street. The building's been long demolished. It's been ceded over. And a few years ago, we've, we improved the property through an agreement with CMSD while we were trying to get this property transferred over to the city. The Councilman will, you know, recall that we've had, you know, a couple starts and stops to get this property over to the city. So his neighborhood's been waiting for it for quite some time. So the two parcels that are, the two sites that go to CMSD are one land bank parcel on West 30th Street, which is needed for their new Lincoln West High School, and then three parcels that are located on West 53rd Street and Train Avenue, which are needed for their new Clark Elementary School. And again, there's no cost for CMSD or the city for these parcels. It's determined that there's a mutual benefit for this exchange, and these exchanges are authorized by the Ohio Revised Code.
All right, Director, have you consulted with the individual council members that's involved in this, whose wards disencumbered?
We have, sir. So Councilman Harrison has been fully up to speed. I have to say, though, I'm not sure if the new council members have been briefed. So Councilwoman House would be for Ward 7. And I believe the school district has been in discussions with Councilwoman Santana and Councilwoman Spencer about the new schools that they wish to build on their existing sites.
Okay. Now, the parcels in Councilman, in former Councilman Bracatelli's ward, that is now, we have our new member here, has she been briefed?
Mr. Chairman, I don't believe we have anything in 12.
Okay.
Not in this, not in this legislation.
Okay. All right, any questions from my colleagues? All right, seeing no further questions from my colleagues, ordinance number 1059-2021 is approved. Ordinance number 1068-2021 by council members Joe Jones, Bishop, Bracatelli, and Kelly by departmental request and emergency ordinance authorizing Director of Public Works to execute a deed of easement granting to the Northeast Ohio Sewer District certain easement rights in the portion of city-owned property located in Karooch Park and declaring the easement rights no longer needed for the city's use. Okay, Director?
Yeah, thank you, thank you again, Mr. Chairman. Again, James DeRosa will take the lead on this and introduce employees from Northeast Ohio Regional Sewer District.
So, Mr. Chairman, I'll go through this ordinance, but first, to my right is Janet Popyelski, who's the Stormwater Program Manager at the Sewer District, and to her right is Angela Jones, who's the Head of Government Affairs for the Sewer District. So, Mr. Chairman, this ordinance is to sell an easement to the Sewer District so that they have better access into the Stormwater Maintenance Basin at Karooch Park. This Stormwater Basin is in the City of Warrensville Heights, but it's City of Cleveland-owned property, and they currently have access through a pretty circuitous route. And what is being proposed is a new access road from the end of East 177th Street that would go down the hill into the Stormwater Basin to give them better access to the basin for future stream restoration improvements along the mainstream of Mill Creek and to address continuing streambed or streambank erosion issues in the Karooch Park corridor. So there's currently a gate and a guardrail that has been constructed at the end of East 177th Street to prevent vehicular access into the site. And we propose selling the easement that would take it from that point down, down the hill at appraised value, which is $3,300. And the City of Warrensville Heights is in support of this as well as it gives, like I said, better access to the basin and their improvements, and their maintenance responsibilities related there, too. We have had a few conversations with Councilman Jones, and we do have some updates for you, sir, about your request for some landscaping and for some, you know, how we're going to handle dumping that may occur at that location. So with that, I can, we can get into those points, or we can open it up to questions.
Okay. All right. Is there any questions? Joe Jones, Councilman Joe Jones?
Mr. Chairman, I'd ask that we hold this piece of legislation. The last time I talked to the Director, we were supposed to be getting together, sitting down and talking about a number of issues that are related to this entryway that has been cut open in the community. We have a lot of illegal dumping. We have a number of issues that need to be dealt with first. I was not aware that this was going to be put on the agenda, and I did have that conversation with the Director, but I haven't heard anything back. So it would be nice if the Director played nice and have that sit down because Sessions with me, or unless he wants to talk about this over the table. And I don't think it'd be really nice.
Okay.
And I'm just letting you know that, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, all right, no problem, Councilman Jones. Director, we are, we are going to hold this piece until we are consulting in a more efficient manner, until I hear back from Councilman Jones. We'll hold this piece.
Understood.
All right. Okay. All right, that is the legislative portion of the, of this meeting.
If you give one, one COO one, come in.
Hey, no more, how are you?
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chairman. I'm sitting here, Jack Brown, Mobile Commandant, Commissioner Kennedy, Wisconsin. Are they going to be here? Yeah, here. Okay.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, yes, we are. Mr. Chairman, if I may, just, just, just opening information, but to my right is Bonnie Tewan, who is the COO, Chief Operating Officer for the City of Cleveland under Mayor Bill. Bonnie's been on the job about three weeks, three or four weeks. She's, she's got broken in on what things we do. If I can just open up and then I let Bonnie go, as you can see, for the...
First Director, just a minute, first Director. Just so we know who's all at the table, can we go around and introduce ourselves? I'm Kevin Bishop, I'm Ward 2, Cleveland City Councilman. I'm also the Chair at the Municipal Services and Properties Committee.
I'm Brian Mooney, the Assistant Chair, City Councilman, Ward 11.
Councilman Joe Jones, representing the City of Cleveland, Ward 1.
Councilman Lance Tate, representing Cleveland's 8th Ward.
Councilman Casey, I represent Ward 16.
Rebecca Moore, Ward 12, and I was just going to ask Director if you could speak up. It was a little bit hard to hear you in the last presentation.
I apologize. Councilwoman?
Councilman Richard Starr, Ward 5.
Anthony Harrison, Ward 10.
Councilwoman Gray, Ward 4.
Rick Roscoe, 311 Call Center Manager.
I couldn't, could you repeat that, Rick? Where are you from?
I'm the 311 Call Center Manager.
What's your last name, Rick?
Roscoe, R-O-S-C-O-E.
And you a 311?
Yes.
Okay.
Kim Roy Wilson, IT Commissioner.
Brandell Scott, Streets Commissioner.
And Bonnie Tewan, Chief Operating Officer.
And I am Michael Cox, I'm the Director of Public Works.
All right, thank you.
Councilman Bishop, Blaine Griffin, Council President, Ward 6 Councilman.
Okay, all right, go ahead, Director.
All right, thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman. If I can, just to the current data, I'll just open this up and then I'll turn it over to Bonnie. As you can see, we have about 10,060 streets in the City of Cleveland, in the City of Cleveland proper. That's about 3,020.
Can you repeat that, Director?
Let me see what's going on here.
It makes it difficult with this...
Okay, yeah, can you hear me now?
Yeah, we hear you.
Is it better?
How many streets?
We have, we have 10,060 streets in the City of Cleveland. That's mains, secondaries, and residential. That's about 3,020 lane miles of streets that we have to maintain. Large events, first, let me just go through what we talk about, how we plow and where we plow. In large events, right, we make a first pass only, right, through our streets. We make a first pass to try to get them passable, and we start on our mains and our, and our secondaries before we move into our residential streets to try to get that done. Then we'll come into our, into our residential sub-sessions, which we have 292 of, and we'll do a first pass and then get back into a second pass, right? This is all with standard event. This is our standard events for a standard event. Now, when we talk about events, this event was larger than we usually get, right? We're talking about two to four inches of passing through, and this guy got us up to 30 inches of snow in a 10-day period. So it was a very large, large event, right? But I want to make sure that, our personnel equipment, what we have right now in the division of streets, I think somewhere, in the division of streets is 158 staff members working in the snow, in our snow program. There are 49 crew members on three shifts. We work 24 hours. We have a 24-hour staffing level. We have 59 dump trucks.
Okay, Director, out of those crew members, how many of them are full-time and how many of them are seasonal?
We have seasonal, we bring on 94 seasonal drivers every year, and I think there's 29 or 29 to 30 full-time drivers.
On the point, Mr. Chairman.
Hold on, just a minute, just a minute.
I'm looking everywhere, and I can't seem to find this what he's talking about. When did we get this come over to us?
Yeah, Bonnie Tewan through the Chair. We just submitted it this, this morning, and you will get a copy of it later on, and I apologize for the late notice on this, but we were working on it over the weekend.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Director and to the, and to your staff, we, you know, there's a lot of information for us to digest, and we, we would appreciate it in the future if we can get it far ahead of the meeting because, you know, it gives us a chance to look it over and give us a chance to come up with questions that we may have about the personnel process, okay?
Thank you, yes, sir. We will do. And also, we have 11 graders, which are the large equipment that we use sometime on our paving, and we, we put them in the snow, in the snow fleet also, the large graders that we use on, on large streets. And then we have about 30 labors, some of them seasonal, some of them full-time, that we put in, we put into action in the snow to clear ADA ramps and also to clear bus shutters. I'll now turn it over to Bonnie.
Randy. Randy?
As the Director mentioned, this was a significant...
Turn on your mic, Commissioner.
This was a very, very significant snow, two-storm event. The first one, obviously, we had a forecast of five to eight inches in snow forecast, and behind that came an additional seven inches of lake effect snow. So all total, that first storm, storm, event was about 15 inches in total. Then, after we managed that event, the next event we just had was another eight to 12 inches of snow. So in all total, as the Director mentioned earlier, we had about 30 inches of snow in a two-and-a-half-week period, which is a significant snow event for us. Based on our service-level agreements that we have, our internal service-level agreements that we, we've often shared with the public, in a normal one-to-four-inch snow, obviously, we would deal with the mains first. But let me be very clear on one thing. We don't start this process, or this clock doesn't start ticking until after the snow has ended. So in the meantime, we're out there fighting the storm, fighting the snow, and then once the snow stops, this process begins. In a normal one-to-four-inch snow, we might have the mains cleared anywhere from four to eight hours and generally closer to four. And the residential's at 24 to 36, generally closer to 24. You get to, you graduate to a four-to-six-inch event, we need eight to 12 hours to clear the mains, and we generally do it closer to eight hours. And a, and the resident... And a, and the residential's 36 to 48 hours. And again, we're pretty much around 24 to 36, even with a four-to-six inch snow. But now you get into six inches and above, and when I say six inches, I don't mean 15 inches. So you get to eight to 12, and now 15 inches. We need, our crews, based on our current configuration, we, we expect our people, our expectation and goal is anywhere from eight hours on the mains to 16 before we would go into residential's. And that's after the snow has ended. Then we have to complete the mains and secondaries and then transition into the residential's. Once we do that, we need another 48 to 72 hours to service them not once, but twice. All 292 subsections. We plow them out initially so that service and emergency vehicles can get through, people can generally get out. But they're not down the pavement. On the next round, we try to get them down the pavement to the best of our ability. And that's when we go back in and plow them all 292 residential subsections a second time. And we do that all within that 72 hours. So to the credit of my staff, I'd just like to say, they met those SLAs in both of these major events. They were well above six inches.
So really, the question becomes, and, and I do wanna, um, you know, applaud our drivers for the work that they've done. I mean, they've been working 24/7 pushing snow for quite some time, and it's, it's, it's a tough job that they have. And they, just as the Commissioner said, they have met the goals of the policy. But the real question is, does the policy meet the needs of the residents, residents and the businesses of Cleveland? And based on what we're hearing, no, it doesn't.
Okay, um, can, we could just pause right there. I wanna, I wanna make a, ask the question based on something the Commissioner said. He gave us the scenario of six inches, uh, six inches or greater snowstorm. So we don't have any protocol in place for if we get like 10 inches or above? Is, is that what you're saying?
No, that's, this, this policy applies whether it's six inches or 20 inches. It doesn't change. We might add some extra equipment as, you know, we tried to do in this second storm. We added some vehicles from, uh, other divisions. We've enlisted help from other divisions, uh, to a limited degree, but they were helping us just to get the first phase done of plowing. These, other departments and divisions don't have the equipment that we need to plow and salt. So we, we do bring in additional staff. We do staff up slightly when we know we're gonna get an eight to 12 inch snow, but that, that's a limited staffing.
Okay, all right, go ahead.
Thank you. So it, as the Director said, I've been here for three weeks, so I look at, at, um, you know, what are the opportunities for improvements? Um, you know, I have a, a new set of eyes.
Excuse me, Bonnie.
Yes?
I'm sorry again. Um, the, the presentation that you're looking at, can we, uh, can we get, Kim, can you make a copy of these presentations and give it to each, each member, please?
Thank you.
All right. I'm sorry, go ahead, Bonnie.
Thank you. So me as the new, new Chief Operating Officer, I'm looking for opportunities for improvements. And, you know, a new set of eyes, what can we do? How can we make improvements, um, you know, for the citizens and for the businesses of Cleveland? So what I have here is I have a, a, a list of, of opportunities. First of all, we talked about the policy. What should the policy be? What is a realistic expectation of, of our residents and our businesses? And, and really find out what that is. Is 72, what we're saying is 72 hours for a, a large storm, clearing that up, one, two passes, basically, one plow, one salt, is that good enough? It doesn't sound like it is. So what can we do to improve our process so that there's better understanding between our, our residents and what we're trying to accomplish? So first of all, let's look at our policy. Is there revisions that we need to do to improve our policy? I can't answer that now. I've only been here three weeks. But what I do know is I think we need to work together as a group to figure out what's acceptable and really have that communication and, and figure out what we need to do and what the policy should really be. Technology. You know, there's a lot of technology out there. Um, we have, uh, last week, we met with a company that, that does, um, route optimization for our, our snow, for snow plows. City of Pittsburgh is using it. We're gonna have a conversation with, with, um, Pittsburgh to see the goods, the good and the bad of the system that, that they're using. There's other programs out there. I have a meeting today with another, uh, company that does something similar in regard to routing. So that if, and it's route optimization, if, if our drivers come across a road that they can't get into because there's parked cars, they, they can identify that and it, the tablet in the cab will reroute them so that they're the most efficient on addressing, in addressing the route that they have to accomplish. It will, it will identify, um, through technology, the routes that they've been on, that they haven't been on, and it, it will just help in the long run rather than the manually keeping track of, on paper and highlighter and whatnot. City Works. We currently have City Works, um, within the City of Cleveland, and I don't think we use it to our capacity. There's, there's a lot of, there's a lot of opportunities.
Bonnie, could you pull the mic a little closer?
I'm sorry. Usually I'm not, um, nobody ever criticizes me that they can't hear me. So City Works, you know, we can use that as a complaint process so that we can get all that data into, um, into a database so that, um, we, we can use that later on and we can, we can identify the hotspots as far as where the complaints are coming from, what we're missing. Um, and it varies from storm to storm. You know, depending on, on the prevailing winds, you know, what areas are worse than others, and we can use that as a system. The hindrances that we come across, the parked cars that don't allow us to plow a certain road because the, the roads are too tight. We can identify them. We can call into our dispatch. They can ping the driver because our drivers have GPS. They can ping that driver. They can put that on a spreadsheet. We can make a list at the, you know, a real-time list. And we can, we can, um, we can use that list, whether it's giving it to the council people to help us get those parked cars moved, whether it's giving it to Public Works to help them identify, um, to ticket those vehicles, or working with the CDC's, um, to help them, uh, help them help us move those vehicles. So that's just with technology. But communication is also a, a key part of, of this. You know, we, we're trying to share as much information as we can. We, we made a public-facing tracker system. And, uh, it, to, to be fair, we struggled with it a little bit. It, it may not have had the most accurate information on it. It was not necessarily providing accurate information. So, um, we're, we're looking at improvements to that. If, if we get into this other technology, other computer programs, we, we can use that rather than using the, the system that we have right now. So the, um, you know, maybe, maybe we erred trying to make that, that public-facing plow-tracking system, uh, available to the public too soon. But we are working on it. I think daily, we're, you know, making some improvements and, and hopefully it becomes more accurate. You know, how we communicate to you guys, um, how we communicate, um, you know, through the media, what's the right frequency? These are all things that we have to reach out to you. What's the expectations of communications? And how do we, as a collective group, communicate to our residents and to our businesses to make sure they're getting the most up-to-date, accurate information? And then, of course, our, our Three One One process, um, the, the call center. If somebody does have a complaint, what's the process that they go through to, to make that complaint? Where does it get documented and how does it get?
Okay, okay, Bonnie. I want to ask you a question real quickly. What, what is in the cabs presently, right now? What, what, what does this driver have at their disposal? How are we, what's in the cabs? How are we communicating with drivers?
Uh, all of our drivers have a, well, this, there's two things that the trucks are equipped with. One being a 800 megahertz two-way radio. So they all have radio communication directly to our operations center. And the operations center records all of their activity, movement, uh, hindrances or, and things of that nature, or, and productivity. And, and all that data is being captured as we move throughout, in and out, uh, the city streets. Also, there's, each one of our frontline snow pieces of equipment have AVL tracking. So we can watch everything on AVL, uh, which is Automatic Vehicle Locator, just to be clear what AVL is. So they have those two things with them. Uh, they also obviously have cell phones. Most people have cell phones and, uh, some are city issues, some are personal, but they, we use cellphone communication as well.
Okay, all right.
Thank you. So the, the next thing we need to, to look, look at as an opportunity for improvement is our personnel. We need to invest in our management, whether that's training, whether it's adding new management. Really, um, looking at our management to determine, you know, what's, what's the right level. Right now, we have our unit leaders that are, uh, the leads of the group. They're out doing the plowing too. That doesn't really give them an opportunity to really oversee the work that's being done by the crew. So I think it's important that we invest in, in our people that are, that are performing the work. And that might also mean adding additional staff. If we add additional equipment, we would have to add additional staff as well. So, you know, we're not ready to make an exact determination on what all those numbers are, but it's something that we need to look at and, you know, make sure that we're being fiscally responsible. And then getting to, um, equipment. We reached out to some of our other departments in this last, um, in this last storm and, um, got, got five additional dumps that we put out in the residential streets. You know, we took those vehicles from the water department. The water department has their own work that they need to do. Um, we swapped out some vehicles. They give our, our, our vehicle maintenance guys, uh, kudos for the work that they did trying to get those, those vehicles up, up and ready to, to plow snow. Um, but we really need to look at the long term as far as what do we need? You know, as, as the Commissioner said, um, we had two storms back-to-back that were very large. It doesn't make fiscally, fiscal sense that, that we gear up for the worst-case scenario. Nobody does that. I mean, we all know that. So we need to find that right balance of, um, how many, how many additional vehicles, what kind of vehicles. You know, one of the things that, that, that I've acknowledged that when I worked at ODOT, you know, most of the vehicles were, um, big tandem dump trucks. And they had some, some small, single-axle dump trucks. Well, you know what? That doesn't work here in Cleveland because we have small alleys that need to, to, to be plowed. And you can't get into those small alleys with those two big tandem trucks. The tandem trucks hold a whole lot of, of salt and it keeps you from going back to the yard, you know, over and over again. But it doesn't work in the, in the tighter neighborhoods with smaller alleys. So we have to find that right balance of the big trucks that have the big capacity and the power to plow a whole bunch of snow and the smaller trucks that might have less salt, um, to carry, but they can get into the smaller alley. So we have to find that right balance, and I'm not sure we're at that, that balance right yet. And then we also have to look at the age of our vehicles too. You know, we don't want to spend a whole lot of time during a snow event fixing trucks. Again, kudos to the, to, to our, our, our mechanics that they, they, you know, triage any, uh, equipment failures and they get them out on the road as quickly as possible. But with, with older vehicles, it gets tough sometimes. So we don't want to be in that situation. So we're, we want to look at the age of our vehicles and make sure we have the right age limit so that we're spending more time on the road than we are in, in the, um, garage being, being fixed. So where are we at? So I, I, you know, I, I appreciate the fact that you guys, you know, were, were reaching out to us with areas that, that, um, needed to be addressed over this last storm. It's, it's not a good way to, to run a business. I think we all acknowledge that. So with the new administration, you know, we're, we're, we're all in as far as how can we improve this process? What do we need to do? How can, how can we help you? How can you help us? You know, because we're all in it for the same reason, for the, for the residents and the, and the businesses in Cleveland. So, you know, we want to make sure we're, we're physically responsible. We want to collaborate with you all so that, um, you know, the communication is good and you understand what we're communicating to you and, um, we understand what you're communicating to us. And in a perfect world, a snow comes and it gets plowed and nobody has any complaints, but we know that's not the reality of it. So, um, we're here to listen, to learn from you, um, and I hope vice versa. And, um, that's our, that's the conclusion.
Also, what is the, Mr. Chairman, is Jeff Brown, he's the, uh, Commissioner of MVM. He's sitting there in the back of the room, so if there are any questions for Motor Vehicle Maintenance. All right.
Okay. Well, thank you, Bonnie. I really appreciate you being here and really appreciate you coming to brief in the council. And you're saying, you, you mentioned about, um, you know, I can't remember, um, exactly what you said, but we, we need to work together. Um, first, I want to take the, um, opportunity to thank all of this, uh, hard-working staff during this storm. It was a tremendous storm. I mean, I, I sat in awe from my neck of the woods and, and dealt with my issues. And I could just imagine how much my residents had to deal with who, who was, who was not as strong or is not as young as I am. So, so I, I, I commend all of the staff, all of the frontline workers, and also commend, uh, the commissioners and the managers who worked so very diligently hard in, in this storm. I know it's not easy to clear, uh, 10,000 streets. You said 10,000 streets? I know it's not easy to clear 10,000 streets, especially when the planning is not, um, you, you know, is not as solid as, as we would like it to be. Uh, so that's the first and foremost. And I wanted to put the question out to, to, to the administration right up front. What do you need from this body and this council to be more successful and more efficient in the snowplow process? And I just want you to think about that, and you don't have to answer it now. But you need to, I want you to communicate back to us what you need, uh, this body and actions this body can take to help you to be more successful, not, not, not for, not for anybody but our residents. Because I have, um, gotten several tongue lashings. And I'm not sure if each one of these folks at the table, across the table, gotten tongue lashings. But I have gotten several tongue lashings from my residents over the last few days. But I appreciate those tongue lashings because it gives me a snapshot of how people are feeling and what people need and what people, uh, and I'm, and I'm, and I'm just glad that I could be there for them. So I, I appreciate, I just want to make that clear to this body, that I appreciate all of my residents that calls me and express their frustration because, because it can give me an opportunity to dialogue with them. So I, I want you to be clear as far as what you need from us to, to make this, uh, make this thing work. Whether it's equipment, whether it's hiring additional personnel, making, making sure that we put in the budget to hire additional personnel, or we have the, the resources to put in new technologies that can, can, can make this process even more efficient. What I was, uh, uh, kinda dismayed about is the communication. And I think that we have to first, uh, look at, uh, our equipment needs and our personnel needs. And I, I think we also, nextly, I think we need to look at, uh, the way we communicate, not only with each other, but with our drivers, with our managers, with the, with the, uh, and with the residents and with, and with the council, okay? So I, I just want you to also consider that. So I am not going to, um, bombard you with a bunch of questions from me because, uh, my members are so eager to, 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 to get their questions answered. So I'm gonna open up the questions from, uh, from my colleagues. Uh, first, I'm gonna go to, uh, my Vice Chair, Mr. Brian Mooney.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, I have a series of questions I'll direct through. So, from what I understand, we have a- So from what I understand, we have about 60 plow trucks. Is that approximately right?
Yeah, 61 plow trucks against salt and plow, correct.
And then that doesn't include, or does it include, doesn't parks have maybe the small pickup trucks for the parks?
We, Mr. Chairman, to the council, we do. We have some small, we have some smaller one ton trucks.
But that's not included within the 60?
That's not included with the streets department.
And those just take care of parks and parking lots?
We will put them in, we will put, and Mr. Chairman to the councilman, we will put them in like this last storm, we put them into a service also.
Oh, maybe for some of the alleys and stuff like that?
Yeah, for some alleys and some of the other areas that we had to get them involved.
So at any given moment, how many of these 60 plows, I know you said we have three shifts, about 48 per people shift. So how many of the plows are on the street for each given shift?
Generally, we run between 47 to 49 drivers per shift.
Oh, that number 48, 40 per shift is how many trucks are out there given concerns about breakdowns or maintenance or issues like that?
Let me be clear, Mr. Chairman, to the council. We have 61 trucks, we have 13 pickup trucks within this streets division, and there are 11 road graders for heavy snow, heavy snow. We don't deploy the road graders in anything less than six inches. So that's our entire fleet augmented by Parks Department who has their own responsibilities for clearing police and fire stations and city properties. So once they complete what they're doing, they assist us.
Alright, so we looking at this, just 10,000 streets divided by 60 plows, that means we have a plow for every 160 streets. That's what the math seems to turn into. It's not a criticism, I mean, but I see the suburbs, I mean, they're much better streets. Is it just because they have a lot more plows per street than us?
Per capita.
Per capita and per street?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So who arrived at this figure? Who's responsible for this 48 to 72 hour expectation? Who's, who did the administration decide on that parameter?
Well, that comes from the streets department. That comes from my division. We put that together in collaboration with the Director's Office and we come up with a plan that we believe that we can accomplish and it's been tested and it works.
Okay, so it's just based on past experience, you have the parameters of 48 to 72 hours. I mean, I would just suggest, talking to my residents, that's, and it's not an attack on you, that's not the expectation of the residents. The expectation of the residents is not 72 hours. And I think, you know, part of this is that they want, they have a higher expectation. And so I think we should look at, see what we can do to get it away from that 72 hour period. But one thing I just want to bring up and address, it's more of a question and comment, I think a lot of what happened during the storm, and between the two storms, a lot of the snow melted. So we almost had a fresh slate, you know? Before it rained, the pavement was pretty much clear before the second storm. But, and I know all of council received this, I mean, we get the calls, we're the ones beating up, we're the pincushions and we try to pass along, you know, to filter the best we can. We know you're doing the best with what you have and you're searching for efficiencies. However, this snowplow tracker, which I think it's not accurate at all, because I saw plows out that were nowhere on the tracker in streets, there's this misconception, I think we should be careful because there was put out there, almost as if you were beating your chest, ha, we got 94% of the streets. And that's, that created a lot of anger in the city because it was easier for me to go through my ward and count the streets that were plowed versus to count the ones that had not yet seen a plow. Now, I'm not denying and argue that, yes, technically according to your parameters, maybe there was a plow somewhere in there Thursday, but we know at this storm, the snow continued and the drifting, I mean, I had to get my driveway six times, that that's meaningless if that happened. So there was this perception out there that our people are looking that, oh my God, 96% is done? Well, why not my streets? So everybody's calling and I had to explain to them, you know, as of Saturday morning, that almost none of my side streets have been touched, that it wasn't, they weren't part of the 4%, that it just, because of the storm, the resources, and I, and believe me, I did see the plows out and finally by Saturday night, a lot of my streets finally got a first plow. But I guess, so I want to be careful of that, that we give an unvarnished, we have to give an unvarnished view. So instead of, it almost seemed like people were beating their chest, look, we had a 94% success rate, that is nothing that anybody in this, I understand why you did, but that just angered everybody. They knew that that's, that 94% of the streets probably hadn't been touched, just the opposite. So I just want to caution about that. But, I mean, now, about the snow process, I mean, I've gone through, a lot of my streets have at least have one lane. I mean, are the plows still going to stay out there? Because a lot of my streets now have seen plows, but it's only one lane or the intersections are still bad. So is that process going to continue?
Absolutely. We can, we have the ability to send them through for the balance of the week and clean up anything that needs to be cleaned up, correct.
And what is the best way for council to pass along or to communicate these areas where we get a lot of complaints?
Actually, you could just email my office or email me personally and I'll make sure it gets communicated.
Now, I know Councilman Polancic is going to touch on this because it's something he's already been in the paper about, I'll let him, but maybe I'll wait for him to address that. I think there has to be a better process and I'll let him fully, I'm not expecting the answer because he's more knowledgeable, he's the one that actually spent a lot of time. There has to be a better process for the residents to express their concerns than currently exists. But I'll, I know he's more averse than that and I'll let him speak to that.
Mr. Chair?
Yeah.
If I may, address that particular point. Commissioner Scott is gracious enough to take the calls now for that, but that's not a long-term solution to that. And I think that might be what you're getting at as far as how we communicate the most efficiently long-term. I think that's a conversation that we can't decide today, that we have to meet, maybe have a subcommittee group between the administration, our staff and the council people on what's the best way to communicate those complaints, whether it's the residents communicating to us or whether it's the council people communicating to us. Honestly, we don't want the residents communicating through you to us. If there's a more efficient, the most efficient way is a one-stop shop and that's what we're trying to get to. So I hope in the future we can get there.
And listen, I mean, everybody appreciates, you know, we have a new mayor and I think everybody's, the council's supportive and I think the new administration, given the short time, there's only so much you could have done, you know, in just a few weeks. That's a long-term process to change. I think Councilman Bishop indicates moving forward, we have to look at whatever we decide, whatever we decide that parameter is, if it's 48 hours, 72 hours, I don't want 72 hours, I don't think anybody does. We have to decide long-term what resources and you're doing the best you can to shore it up short-term and also consider efficiencies. But, I mean, efficiencies will help, but only so much. It may just be, and I'm not, I know everybody's working hard, I've seen the plows out, there's just that expectation of residents that, that's, that a lot of them say, hey, 48 hours, it's been 48 hours. And even today, I'm getting the calls and the texts, hey, it's been more than, it's been three, four days, I still only have one path down my street. And so I think we need to work to improve. But I'm sure, I do appreciate the work that everybody's trying to do and I'm sure my colleagues have lots of other questions, so I won't try to cover them all. Thank you for your time. And Randy, I got to say, when I did send you, you immediately responded and I appreciate that. Thank you.
Alright, thank you, Councilman Mooney. Just for my colleagues, if you want to get on the list, you got to signal because my cellphone, I hope it's in my office, but I don't have it with me, so if you can't, text me. Alright, thanks, thank you, Councilman Mooney. Quick follow-up on council, what Councilman Mooney said about the roads that's impassable because of parked cars. And, you know, we all have parked cars on our streets, but the bottom line is, I have a lot of parked cars that was on the street in the first storm, that's still plowed in from the first storm. And here we are on the second storm, just, what, how many, eight, nine, 10 days later? And these same cars are still there. Director Cox, that's not your department, correct?
Uh, no, sir. What we will do is talk with safety.
Okay, but Bonnie, that falls up under you, right?
It's safety does not.
No.
Okay, alright.
We'll talk with the director.
Okay, alright, I just want to make that comment. Okay, next, we're going to go to our council president, Blaine Griffin.
Thank you so much, Councilman Bishop, and thank you for pulling this together. A couple of things, first of all, I'm glad, Councilman Bishop, that you mentioned the workers. The workers really worked hard this weekend. All of council really appreciates it. I know a lot of the members of council actually went and engaged them and went to the garages and really showed our appreciation. So I want to make sure that we say that first and foremost. Strategically, do you shovel around fire stations and police stations first? I did not hear if that was the case because one of the things that I want to make sure is, well, first of all, do you, through the chair, to Director Cox and to Chief Tewin, do you guys shovel around fire stations as well as EMS stations and also police departments first?
Mr. Chairman, to the council president, those tasks are assigned to Parks, to the Parks Department. They do all of the public buildings, police, safety buildings and fire stations, rec centers, public auditorium, City Hall, they're assigned to those. So they do those separate from what streets does.
Right, right. And I understand that, Mr. Chair, but what I'm trying to get at is the adjacent area around the actual police departments that are adjacent to them so that they can actually get in and out and other things like that.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, we will, if they have a one ton of something down that street, they will plow around that fire station or police station. The pickups are not really equipped to do streets. We are doing parking lots, we're doing the aprons of the fire stations, we're doing EMS so that they can get in and out. But they're not, all of our vehicles in parks are not capable of plowing a street, especially in the heavy snow.
Alright, and the reason I asked that question, Mr. Chairman, as you mentioned about safety, we've got a lot of reports that there were ambulances and other kind of vehicles that might have had challenges getting to scenes. And I just was wondering if you guys had any, how do we address those issues? If we actually have ambulances or that are trying to handle emergencies, how do we work with those safety forces to make sure they're able to get to scenes?
Mr. Chairman, to the council, I think what the chief is talking about is how do we improve what we're doing and those are, that is an excellent point that we would need to look at because we have not in the past done fire stations, around the fire stations or the fire station on Woodland or somewhere that we plowed Woodland Avenue. So we, that should be, we do take in effect CMSD schools. At the end of every shift, we do go around those schools to make sure that they can get in and out. Buses can get down those streets to get to schools. So it is an excellent point. I think Bonnie made the point of how do we improve? There's one improvement that we can look into and see how we get that done and not get too far out of a systematic approach, but we can look at that also.
Thank you, thank you, Director. The other thing that I wanted to ask is, do you ever have recommended routes? Let me tell you what I mean by recommended routes. You do mains and secondary streets first. Is there a way or is there something that you can do to really try to make sure that those first and secondary routes are cleared first and actually communicate that with the public so that public kind of knows which routes that they should actually, the recommended routes? Do we do any communication like that?
Mr. Chairman, to the council president, we do not do that kind of communication. Again, I think as Randy has said, the commissioner said, we try to make them fair to passable, those main routes, all of them, before we turn in, understanding that people have to get to their businesses to their work and all those other things, and then we turn in. We've been turning in earlier than normal in these last two storms because we have to. There have been some concerns on some of the main routes and as we plow and, you know, buses had some problems, so we had some problems with this heavy snow. So we try to get, again, those mains, all of our mains and secondaries into a fair to passable solution.
Thank you so much. Mr. Chair, just a couple more things. So one of the things that I noticed is that I think that the first snow, when it came through, the first night, that a lot of that snow was picked up and it was shoveled. However, as you just stated, then more snow came, lake effect or whatever, you know, came through. So how do you guys make the determination of when you actually should try to pick up, when you should actually focus on these, when do you consider these priorities? Let me help you understand what I'm saying. So a lot of people have problems with snow being shoveled up on the aprons.
Yes.
And more so than we've ever seen it. And part of that, I believe, is because there was a decision probably either to not shovel the first round of snow and then let, you know, let the snowstorm kind of, let all the snow fall before you actually go and shovel it. So how do you do the timing? How do you make the determination on when you're actually going to shovel the snow? Or do you just keep it moving the whole time?
Mr. Chairman, to the council, I'll let Randy answer.
Mr. Chairman, to the councilman, it's based on levels and inches of snow. So, and the storm itself, so as I stated early, as I stated earlier, we're fighting the storm as it's snowing. When the storm first begins, we're out there fighting it. Once the snow stops and the level of snow exceeds two inches, we make conscious decisions on whether we're going to just apply salt, if we're going to salt and plow simultaneously, or we're going to plow only. In a snow like the two we've just had, we had to go into plow only mode. But we saw the mains to keep them safe. But when we transitioned into the residential, after we got the mains safe and passable, not perfect, not running wet, safe and passable, we went to the residential because the need was there. Once we go in there with eight, 10, 12 inches of snow, we're in plow only mode. And we go in and we don't put down the salt because we have to get through them, we have to move the top layer off, we have to make access for emergency vehicles, as you mentioned. So we make sure that that's our priority in that type of snow. Conversely, if it had been two inch snow, we go through there with salt, get there quickly. If we, if it had been a four inch though, we go through there with salt and plow. So the determination on where we drop the plows is when the snow exceeds two inches with additional snow coming.
Okay. But you said a lot and I get what you're saying. I think those are the kind of things that we need to do to be able to help our public understand. I'm having a community meeting tomorrow night. My goal is to try to interpret and try to articulate what you're talking about, about how you actually remove snow. So if I'm hearing you correctly, even though you make one pass, like I know you made one pass or whatever else like that, you are only in plow only because of the amount of snow. Therefore, that's the reason why you pretty much just didn't waste salt.
Correct.
Because you knew that more snow was on its way.
Correct.
Okay. One last thing, Mr. Chairman, you said something about per capita, that there's more trucks per capita. I'm really interested at some point in time, if we look at, what was the amount of trucks five years ago, 10 years ago or whatever, in order to see when we were at capacity? Because that's one of the things that I hope we could do as a budget hearing, is to really look at how we can get more trucks and more drivers per capita. Because I do believe that, you know, some bigger cities have gone to the shrinking city model. I'm not a big fan of it and a lot of people have, you know, suggested that there should be a shrinking city model because this city was built for 1 million people and we still have 10,000 600 miles of road or whatever you said. And I think our level of capacity with personnel and trucks have dwindled over the year. So what do we need and what recommendation are you guys making for us to get back up to capacity to have a better truck and personnel per capita?
Mr. Chair, if I may.
Go ahead.
Thank you for that. And one of the exercises that we would like to do moving forward is do look at best management practices with other communities our size and what we do. We don't have to reinvent the wheel. You know, what standard, you know, what's the right level? And I appreciate your comment and that is one of the exercises that as we move forward, we will look at that.
One last thing, Mr. Chair, I just want everybody to know that I really agree totally with the chair. Communications on this, I think, was a challenge. It was very, very frustrating when that 94% number got thrown out there and people were saying, you know, that was not the case. The tracker also was very challenging because it was a little bit misleading at times, you know, when people are clearly looking out their door and they see that their drivers not shoveled, but then they look on the website and see that they've, that, oh, there's been a pass made. And a lot of that is due to what you just said because- And a lot of that is due to what you just said, because more snow came after the first pass. So, I really hope that we can work together on communication because to me, I think that as long as you're honest with the residents, they're able to digest what's happening. And then, as you mentioned, hills, I would ask if you could, and I'm not sure if the same supervisors are there, it's important to really listen to the guys on the truck because there's a few streets that had not been salted and we had people who couldn't get to work because literally they couldn't get up and down hills. So, there may be certain areas that you might have to salt even before you get to that point. When you look in the woodland hills area, everything in the woodland hills areas, these are large, steep hills that people had a very tough time getting up and down those roads. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, alright, thank you, Council President. Alright, Annie, did you, you get that? Okay, alright, thank you, Council President, those were very great questions. Alright, next, we're gonna go to Councilman Casey and we're gonna come back to Polency, okay? Councilman Brian Casey.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman to Chief, Tuan, welcome. I notice you're a little nervous. Calm down, this is, take it from the old pro right here, it's not as bad as you're gonna think it's gonna be. Mr. Chairman to Commissioner Scott, according to your thing here, there's 59 dump trucks, right? So, how many of those dump trucks in the last week were out of service?
We average, we've averaged about 10 a day.
About 10 a day?
Yeah.
And do we know how long they average being out of service, Mr. Chairman to Commissioner?
20, 12 to 24 hours.
Okay, so, this is kind of where I'm gonna end up leading to my questioning, is that when you sat down and you say we have 59 dump trucks, that's a very true statement. But the reality of it is, is that we don't have 59 dump trucks that are out there plowing the streets, removing the snow. So, this is where I'm gonna end up going with the transparency of the administration, okay? So, first, we have 59 dump trucks, which is, when you say that, everybody's to believe that we have 59 dump trucks or 60 dump trucks out there plowing the street when that's not the reality of it, right? The reality of it is, is we probably have 30 to 35 plowing the streets at any given time, 40 maybe?
Forty-nine.
Forty, forty, forty-nine, as I mentioned earlier.
Forty-nine.
Forty, forty-nine. So, for 24 hours, we have 49 dump trucks now out on the streets, okay? And then, how many currently are sitting over at motor vehicle maintenance to be serviced?
I have to look at today's report.
Wait, Jeff is here.
We start, go ahead, Commissioner, please.
So, this morning, we started the day off with 12. That number's a little bit higher because even though streets was plowing on Sunday.
Could you, we have problems.
Talk into the mic if you could move a little closer.
We started the day off with 12 units out of service. Over the course of the storm, we were averaging anywhere from eight to 12 at any given time. They could range from being out of service for 15 minutes for a headlight to, you know, a day or day and a half if we have to replace like front suspension issues, so it's moving constantly.
Okay, and Mr. Chairman to the Commissioner, what's the longest a truck was out?
Probably up to a week. You know, when we're doing front suspension work, there's some parts issues that we run into, and it could be up to a week, maybe a little bit longer.
Alright, so, I won't belabor this with motor vehicle maintenance, I'm sure we'll take this up during budget hearings because we're here for the plowing, but I appreciate that information. Back to Chief Tuan. I can appreciate the administration's eagerness for transparency. But transparency can also be a bad thing and a dangerous thing when it's not done correctly, right? And I don't believe that the plowing so much was the issue over the last five days. I think the policy has worked for so many years. I think what has been added is the transparency of the policy. And the mayor's office misleading the public regarding posturing bogus misinformation to the public, and it's not the administration that gets those phone calls, it's the council, right? In my tenure here at the city, I don't think I've ever received more phone calls regarding any event than I did over the last 48 hours.
Yeah.
And that being because the administration trying to do the right thing, right, but maybe wasn't readily prepared for it. The tracker was the problem, right? Just as an example, I get a phone call yesterday morning that a street wasn't done, I get, leave my house, I go to the street, the street's completely done down to the pavement. I call the person back and they said to me, well, according to the tracker, it wasn't done. That's a problem. I can really appreciate the transparency of it all, but perception is reality to the residents of the city of Cleveland, right? When the administration says that they're into the side streets at 3 o'clock, city residents are opening their windows, looking for that snowplow because what they hear is their streets getting done at 3 o'clock. So, although I can appreciate the transparency, we really need to be careful with the way we put the transparency out and the way we word it. The 94% thing, I don't know who came up with that, Mr. Chairman to the Chief, but that was just a complete, I don't want to say you lied, but it's a complete false, misleading piece of information that sent the city in a tizzy, right? That's the reality of it, right? Mr. Chairman to the Commissioner, according to our current policy, was it met?
Our service level agreements?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. The only thing that's changed, it wasn't the policy that changed, it wasn't the street plowing that changed, it was the transparency that has changed. When the tracker first went live, you would have thought that the whole southeast side of the city was completely done, down to the pavements, looking like spring, and we know that that wasn't true. And then you look at the tracker and you look at, words 14, 12, 13, 16, you'd have thought that a snowplow never went through it, and we know that that wasn't true. So, although we can appreciate the transparency, we really need to work better, and I'm saying "we," meaning the administration and the council, at the way we're putting the information out. If we're gonna put information out, it has to be accurate. We cannot give a false hope of a timeframe, a specific timeframe. That 3 o'clock thing was also a dagger, right? Because people just expected, we're moving to residential side streets at 3 o'clock, now people are thinking that it's my street that's getting done at 3 o'clock. So, we have to, you know, I can appreciate, again, that transparency and wanting to do that, but sometimes we need to take a step back, and there's a difference between talking about, and how do I phrase this without trying to get political, right? We're not campaigning anymore, right? It's the reality of what's happening with the city, right? Saying things are one thing and it's grand and it's, you know, wonderful, but the reality of what's going on may be a little bit different than the ideas of it all. So, until we can come together and come up with the right way to provide the information to the public, right? I mean, you, you know, you said you wanted to be fair, that, you know, you struggled. I appreciate the fact that, you know, you're here on part of the administration saying you struggled. It's not, this is not an easy thing, right? Maybe we err. I would have to say yes, you know, and that's okay, right? As long as we admit it and we learn from it and we educate ourselves and the public and we move forward. But I do want to caution you, on your one-stop shop, and Mr. Chairman, this will be the last thing I say, if you want to do a one-stop shop, we better have it right. It better be where if a resident calls, somebody is there to pick up a phone, not a recording, you know, we're government, we don't stop, we're 24/7. We can't have people on hold for hours, you know, we can't have them listening to elevator music for, you know, 45 minutes and then they're hanging up, and then who are they calling? They're calling us. And that's okay, there's 17 of us and we asked for the job, right? That's part of the job. Shouldn't be, but it is part of the job technically. So, you know, it's gonna take a lot of work, it's gonna take 3-1-1, it's gonna take, you know, streets, it's gonna take the administration, it lands, the buck stops, you know, with you and the mayor, right? They, everybody wanted these jobs and the buck stops with us. So, I would really sincerely hope in the future that when we want to be transparent, that we're gonna be transparent in the right manner, right, in the right fashion. And I'm not beating up on the administration, I'm just letting you know that we took a bigger hit than anybody over the last 72 hours, and a lot of that came not from what was going on in the streets, but what was coming out of City Hall. And we need to correct that, is what we need to do. But again, I appreciate the efforts of all, I mean, I've visited the Lorraine Garage, I don't know how many times, I appreciate the efforts of all those individuals who are out there keeping things clean, you know, it's very aggravating even with our residents because they're part of this as well, right? They need to move those cars because there's a huge difference between a street that is done with cars on it and streets that done without cars, right? So, I appreciate the effort that everybody takes, but here it is, Monday morning, it's the beginning of a new week, and I'm pretty sure most people are able to at least get out of their driveways and get down the street. May not be easy because it's only one way passable, however, you know, it is done, but I really hope that the administration relies on individuals who've been here for years. You got a good director in Director Cox, Commissioner Randy Scott, they know what they're doing, right? We may need to tweak the way we tell people what they're doing. So, on that, you know, again, I appreciate, you know, the work that all the workers did, but I look forward to working with the administration and how to properly, properly do this. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Alright, thank you, Councilman Casey, you brought up some very great points. I think anybody here at the table would be sort of angered if you see that 95% of the streets have, in the city are done, but your street is still not plowed. It would make you feel like, wow, I'm last, we are last, like we always feel like we are last. Okay, so, but thank you, Councilman Casey, that was a great point. Alright, we're gonna go to the Dean, Councilman Mike Polency.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, my honorable members and to the administration. Many of my colleagues have brought up some very, very good points. When we look at the information that's been presented to us, and I'm appreciative of that, and I'm also appreciative to the employees, the people who are out there working, you know, very diligently. We know we got a lot of snow, and I appreciate the work that was taking place out of the Glenville yard, certainly. One of the greatest challenges that I experienced, and as I'm sure my colleagues, I'm still getting phone calls this morning about streets that are allegedly not done, so, which does not make me a happy camper. So, at the end of the day, we heard about the 94, 97% stuff that was put out, we heard about the 3 o'clock when they were supposed to be into the side streets, which, you know, didn't materialize. But my greatest frustration, besides actually seeing plows on our streets and, you know, UPS, Federal Express, any of the delivery services, they know how many vehicles they need to have. We need to really understand the number of vehicles that we need, the size that we need, because as you've indicated, Bonnie, the tandems did not work on the alleyways, on the cul-de-sacs where the tandems came in and actually plowed like spokes. And if you didn't try to get out of your driveway and you didn't drive in that spoke, you are in trouble because they could not make the turn. Our cul-de-sacs in the city are smaller than in suburban communities, so we needed to have smaller trucks, and that did not take place. Councilman, Chairman Blaine and I spoke about that over the weekend because of issues that he had in Little Italy and that I've had in Collwood Village. But what was so frustrating to all of us around the table, people would go on the snow tracker and then they would call me and say, why aren't there any plows in our neighborhood? Now, I didn't go on it because I knew better, okay? But those are the reoccurring calls I was getting, where are the plows, Councilman? Where are the plows? We don't see them on the snow tracker, they're not there. Why aren't we getting plows on the northeast side of the city? So, when residents call me, as I've learned over the years, to complain, I always get off the phone and I call a number, I call 2510, I want to see what they're experiencing. So, like on Friday, when I called at 9 o'clock in the morning to get the answering service, that this is the overnight answering service, and I said, what? And that's just what I said, I said, what? At 9 o'clock in the morning? The City Hall answering service. I said, I'm calling about streets, because that's what people were telling me, they were calling, they were getting the answering service. So, then I was switched to some young lady who then was very polite, but she told me, Councilman, because I identified myself, she said, we're not taking calls till 9:30. I said, what? We're not taking calls to 9:30? Yet people are calling in about the conditions of their roadways. We're not taking calls. Then I inquire, I make some other phone call, I find out on Friday to my colleagues, there was only two people in 3-1-1. Three, two people initially in 3-1-1, and then finally, a supervisor came in and had to start working the phones. We're in the height of a frickin' massive snowstorm and you only got two call takers? Totally unacceptable. Then you wonder why 17 members got their butts kicked, I had to look in a mirror to see if I still had a butt. Okay? That is just totally unreasonable. In the height of a terrible storm, you don't have people answering the phones. So, then council members are besieged and belabored about the phone calls and getting, and you know what? I don't blame anyone who called my office complaining. I never do, because they call us, not because they want to hear our voices, they call us out of frustration. And so, I was frustrated as well with the calls and complaints. And I do appreciate when I turned in complaints into Randy Scott, that he responded back to me. But the fact of the matter is, we didn't have enough trucks out, we didn't have enough drivers, as we know now, and as we, some of us knew over the weekend, trucks were breaking down, which is a thing that's gonna happen. But at the end of the day, citizens, I believe in transparency, and I want to say this, Mayor Bibb came on the 3rd. Bonnie indicated you've been here three weeks, so, but it is time for real transparency. The council needs to understand exactly how many trucks we do need, how many drivers we need, what type of vehicles we need. This constant, you know, during the budget hearings, as some of you recall last year, when we asked about this, we were told, we're fine, we're ready, we're ready. Well, we weren't ready, we weren't ready. And so, we had people that missed work for two days, businesses that couldn't open, we had emergency vehicles stranded throughout our neighborhoods. I got calls from care union telling me about the number of EMS units that got stranded. But if I look at other cities, and I want to fall off on the chairman's line of questioning as well, Chicago, New York, other cities, they equip garbage trucks with plows. They have the ability to do that in severe conditions. We don't do that. We need to understand, again, the condition of the fleet. If we have X number of vehicles, we need to know their age, their condition. We got a capital budget here, we need to understand exactly what we need. In an Armageddon snowstorm, we're never gonna have enough vehicles, we all know that. But the weather, we're gonna get more snow, I want to tell everybody around this table, we're gonna get more snow. At least that's what they tell us. So, it's not going away, more's gonna come, we still have issues as of this morning with streets that are not alleged to the citizens, that are not adequately plowed or open, where as we've heard, one lane where they can get down them. We've had the issue with the cars, we discussed this with the chief, and he indicated at the safety committee that individual council members had to make a request for them to ticket cars in their neighborhoods. We shouldn't have to do that. That ought to be a standard policy. As the chairman indicated, you have cars and vehicles that have not moved, and I want to thank the chairman again for holding this hearing today, that haven't moved since MLK. They have not moved. And if you make no effort to uncover your vehicle or attempt to dig it out, you know what, you should get a ticket. I mean, this is unacceptable, they have the number of cars known in this city, no effort. They have the number of cars known in this city, no effort. And with the ice now, those things aren't getting until the, the, the snow melts. They're not going to move because you can't get into them. There's an ice, there's a, an ice wall around them where you couldn't even pull them out if you wanted to pull them out. But they need to get tickets. It's about setting standards, it's about setting the tone. And above all, Mr. Chairman, I hope this is a wake-up call for the mayor, for you, Bonnie, and your team. We have to do things differently. We have to do things differently. The old day, the old way of doing things, of telling us that everything's fine, ain't cutting it. It's not cutting it with me. And, and again, why we cannot staff the call center is beyond me. I mean, we all knew this was coming. This was coming. But you only have two people in 311 and I don't even know if you had anybody in, in the mayor's action center. I was told at times there was nobody in the mayor's action center. That's, that puts a tremendous burden upon every person at this table. It puts our citizens at a great disadvantage. And believe me, the majority of the citizens were very understanding about this storm. Believe me when I tell you, they understood the amount of snow that came down in a period of time. But at the end of the day, when, as Councilman Casey's and others have said, when you raise these expectations and you tell people this, and this, and that's not happening, that's what gets the hair up on their neck. Because they feel they're just being misled and they're being played with. And at this point in 2022, we need to be brutally, brutally frank with our citizens as to what, you need to tell us, you know, this is what I learned, Mr. Chairman, and Mr. President, my honorable colleagues, me and a senior member. If it's good news at the table, it's great. But if it's bad news, as long as it's the straight news and forthright news, I can deal with it. And I believe our citizens can deal with it as well, as long as it's straight up. Tell us, give us the facts. Tell us, this is the condition, council members, that we find ourselves in. This is what we need. We might not cure this within this budget. I brought my budget book to look at the vision of streets, the number of employees and so many other areas within public works. We, we might not be able to tackle this completely, this budget hearing. But I got to believe, if you're telling us correctly, Bonnie, and, and the mayor's team are telling us correctly, then we're going to, we're going to see some changes. We're going to see you recommending some things to us to get done. Because if, if nothing changes in this budget, if there's no additional purchases of vehicles, then it's all, it's all air at this table. And I'm beyond that at this point in my life. Our citizens are paying for services, our businesses are paying for services. We got to give them services within a reasonable period of time. And those of us that are on the edge of the city, when people can look across, as a good number of my colleagues are going to look across a main street or look at another neighboring community and their streets are all down to the pavement and you can't drive down our streets, that doesn't create goodwill, I can assure you. Doesn't create goodwill. So, Mr. Chairman, I'm, I'm here to work, I'm here to help, I'm here to serve on any capacity, subcommittee, whatever, but we need to really drill down on this. This is an issue that has to be fixed. And I want to say, dump trucks and tandems, they can be used year-round. Fire trucks and EMS vehicles can't. Those are sole purpose vehicles. When we purchase, we purchase dump trucks and pickup trucks, those can be used for, for park cleanup, they can be used for illegal dumping cleanup, the street maintenance. So those, that's why I'm saying, we need to build our fleet. Because they can be used for a whole bunch of other things. Let's think, let's think out of the box, let's think globally here. And so I'm here, again, I thank you, Mr. Chairman, your committee, for allowing those of us who are non-members of the committee to sit in and to discuss this issue. And I appreciate the council president's leadership, his concern, because he caught it too, I know that for a fact. And the fact of the matter is, things have to change. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Thank you, Councilman Polynski. Councilman, Councilman Polynski brought up great points. First, when you mentioned that, you know, residents don't call to hear our voices, they call so we can hear their voices. And they were very, very upset. And, you know, and I don't blame them, and they should, and they should hear somebody's voices. Now, that being said, we have somebody here from 311. Do you want to make a comment on Councilman Polynski's line of questioning?
Yes. Mr. Chair to Councilman, yes, we did have two people at 311 answering calls.
Could you, could you speak into the mic, please?
Yes, we did have, fully staffed, the seven. Unfortunately, the resident, our call tuckers also live in the city of Cleveland, they were unable to get in as well. They're residents like everyone else. And so we were fortunate to have two people come in along with the supervisor who were able to answer calls. And we also sent calls over, forwarded calls over to the streets division to assist with answering calls.
So I'm, so the information I received was correct?
Yes. Okay. All right. Appreciate it. All right, next, we're going to go to Councilman Richard Starr, and we'll come back to Joe Jones.
Thank you, Chair, for everything, calling this hearing. For the chair to the director, as well as the whole administration, as I think about everything that's going on, you know, I so happened to turn around and just see that...
Hey, Councilman Starr, can you, can you check that? Yeah, thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you, thank you so much, Chair. The chair to the director, as I sit around, I think about the fact that Cleveland has been established since 1796. As you think about that, we've been having snowstorms since then.
That's right.
And, and what I mean by that is, I really am mindful of things that I say and I do some research. So within my research, I first want to address to the administration, we had a snowstorm in our city and in a central community, we didn't have no warming center. I emailed on Wednesday requesting and asking for a warming center in a central community. I want to know with our, from our chairman to our director, like, do you use technology? And I mean by that is, I added you about five or six different emails throughout that day, throughout the snowstorm. Other people may respond, but I'm trying to get clarification on how processes are going because I was looking for a warming center and a residence in a central community did not have one in Ward 5. Like, what is the process of selection at? Like, never in my day of life have I seen that occur. Normally, Lonnie Burton is the hub. And it's, for some reason, it was not this year. And then I requested information, trying to figure out how it can become a warming center, and I still haven't got a clear definition on what to do or what I can do to make sure that happens.
Mr. Chairman to the councilmen, we opened up four recreation centers strategically throughout the city as warming centers. We did not open them all night. We opened them as extended hours at our rec centers and we placed them strategically in the neighborhoods. We did not open all, all 20 of our, 20 of our recreation centers, we just opened four. So as we move forward and we need this kind of situation to be handled, we're looking to where those should be and how we should get, you know, get to, every, every neighborhood probably could use one. But we had to figure out where we could put them and what we were doing.
All right. Chair to the director, on top of that as well, we just heard that from 311 that we have staff who are supposed to be in to be able to work, not able to get out of their street. Let me make sure, let me get some understanding of this. So we plow main streets and then we come back later to residential streets. How can I get off to the main street if I can't even get out of my street? So as, as far as going through the new processes, I think we really need to take a strategic approach and look at what we're, what we're saying. Meaning, I'm going to get your main street, but I can't even get off my street to get to my main street to even get to work. And then next you know, we have a staffing issues on, in regards to the streets and the call center. A couple of different things that I wanted to highlight. We mentioned in staffing, from just understanding, did we have like fully staffed this, this, during this winter storm or since MLK? Have we had one weekend or one day where we had all 10 trucks and all 10 routes from a station covered in which we being able to say, hey, if I have a station like from Ridge Row and coming out of there, first shift, we got 10 trucks. Then the second shift, we have, you know, additional 10 trucks for all three shifts. Is it a point that we have all 10 trucks out on the road for all three shifts?
Mr. Chairman to the council, yes, yes. We, we start off with, as we say, first shift, we probably have about 48 trucks on the street. At any time, we could get some, some trucks that go down, either for minor or major issues, which then have to go into the shop, so, for repair. So yes, we do start off with about, averaging about 48 trucks per shift. Well, let me, let me stress, make sure. Our first shift is 48, our second shift is about 24, 24, 26. And then our third shift jumps back to 48. That's our normal staffing. If and when we get into a storm like we got into this last two storms, then we will hold people over from first shift to put additional crews to make our 48 trucks on second shift and hold people over again on third shift. We will continue 24-hour shifts with maximizing the number of trucks and, and equipment we have available. So we will hold over, use, use whatever we have to do to get things done. In addition to our road graders and other equipment that we would take from, not take, but borrow from utilities, parks, and any other, and traffic engineering, we put everything we can in storms, depending on, on the amount of snow we're getting in the storm. So yes, sir, we do try to maintain a certain level. But again, a truck has to go down for a headlight because, because of standards, we have to make sure that, that headlight's in. So we have to take these trucks that are running 24 hours a day, right? Three shifts. And we have to take them in sometime for service when things are wrong. So we do try to maintain that level all the way through the day, 24 hours.
Well, council to the director, so we have no snowplow openings for hiring? Do we need more staff as far as personnel?
Mr. Chairman to the councilmen, we are at our budgeted level for snowplow drivers. We are budgeted for 29, 29 full-timers, we stay on our year, and 94 seasonal employees to drive our trucks.
Can you, council director, can you say that, that, what's that last number? You said 29?
It's 20, we have 29, remember, 29 full-time drivers.
Correct.
And we have 94 seasonal snowplow drivers that we bring on, starting in October, November, to help, to make sure that we're moving the snow.
And one last, one last, one last thought. Councilor to the chair to the director, what is the training protocol? Like, if we bring them in October, because we had a, like we said, we all know we had a severe snowstorm, we've been dealing with it since Martin Luther King weekend, we really didn't get snow until that weekend. So if they got started on October, which has like almost three months of training or getting prepared, that 94% is really skewed, if you look at it from our end and from the residents. And it seemed like we had a lot of staff out there on the trucks because, as I was looking at the snow tracker and trying to get out the yard as well to go visit wards, we didn't have, it, it didn't seem as if that many roads were completed. And, and also to, to that, can we update the tracking or the routes? Because you may have a route where you pull and snowplow parts of Ward 5 and Ward 6 on one route, and then it's like a couple of streets that they could have just hit within that timely manner right there, but they chose not to because it ain't on their route. Another truck is going to come. And then also, I was able to see that based on the numbers and employees that work, we had some states, some stations where we only had three trucks go out or three staffing. So that's why my question is, are we really staffing people or are we just saying they're on a schedule, they may not be there, or, or things like that? Because it just seems, it just seemed odd to me to see 94%. But then I look in the reality and drive around and I like, not even 94% of Ward 5, Ward 12, Ward 6, Ward 7, Ward 4, Ward 3 was even touched to that, to that magnitude, meaning we hitting the main roads because the main roads is there. I'm scared to drive my Fusion down the side street and, because I'm going to be stuck and I got to show where my backseat as well. So I'm just looking at, since 2011, have we made any significant technology upgrades to snowplowing?
Mr. Chairman to the, to the councilmen, I think that the chief operating officer talked about what we were looking into, making upgrades in technology, which we do need. I think nobody on this table, that side of this side, doesn't understand that we need more technology, right? But what we need in order, with the technology is also process. All right, technology without process and a plan is just what it is, technology. You can't fall in love with the tool. We have to work to, to fix the technology, to upgrade the technology, and also to make sure that our people are using it properly and that we can then track where we at and what we're doing. The 94%, I think we, I think we said here before, and I think everybody at this table knows, that we, you know, that 94% mean we, we went down the street. Does not mean that the street is done. That, that street is not done. It is a first pass and we have to make one, two, maybe three paths. We still have to go back this week to finish up these streets. We have to. So that is, that, that, that communication, again, again, as, as the chief operating officer has to be something that we get out and is correct. I think Councilman Casey said, expectations and understanding what we're saying when we say 94% complete is not complete. It is the first pass on those streets that we've gone through. So I, I, I hope I've answered your question. I, I missed the first part about the staffing, but our staffing levels and training, the training, what we do is, we have a recall list, sir. These drivers come back, majority, about, excuse me, 70, 75% of the drivers come back year after year. We probably hire maybe 30% that are new drivers that we take in early to make sure that they are learning their routes and operating the equipment properly. So that training period does go from there to there. The most important part is learning their routes, where they're going. And most of them, they, because of seniority, they go into the night shift. Because the, the, the veteran drivers usually take the first or second shift. So we do have a training process with the drivers, the new drivers that come on. The other drivers have, they're seasoned drivers and they know where they're doing and how to operate their equipment. So we do have that training process in place.
For the chair to the director, as well as Commissioner Scott, I want to say thank you for your transparency. Like, whenever you get an email from a council member regarding a street, your responsiveness is, you know, top tier. Because some just don't respond back to nothing. Then one last thing, one last thing I wanted to make sure I get understanding, like, I know in some, some years past, we had an agreement for us to, for the city to purchase five trucks each year. Have we been doing that or, or no?
Mr. Chairman to the council, we have not purchased five trucks per year and you, and if you're just talking about the division of street, no, we have not. We go off the capital budget, capital vehicle budget, and we, I think we brought two new trucks in this year, two new trucks in this year. And we'll be going back with the administration, talking about where we at with our purchasing and how do we do what we need to do, not only in streets, but there is a general fund budget, capital vehicle budget, that has to be spread amongst the general fund. So we will look at that whole, with, with the chief operating officer, see what we have and how we get what we need to do, as, as the chief has said.
And then last, last thing, council to the director, when are you scheduled? Are you retiring this year or?
Mr. Chairman to the, to the, to the councilmen, I have, yes, I stayed on for 90 days with Mayor Bibb, who asked me to stay on for, for a little while. My last day, my first day on this job, I think I was here before Michael Polynski. My first day on this job was April 4th, 1972, Mr. President. I was 22 years old with Afro. I will now be leaving the employment of the city on April 4th, 2022, which will give me 50 years of service. I hope that I have served the, the people of the city of Cleveland, right? To the best of my ability. And I, I feel good about what I've done. Everybody may not feel that way, but that's okay. But I think I've given my, a half of my life to, to serving the city of Cleveland as a city of Cleveland person. I grew up at POC, all right? And the projects at 5115 Althway, that's where I grew up, all right? And so I hope, hope that I have made something happen that would not happen if I had not been here. So I appreciate that, I appreciate serving with all of you. I appreciate that, you know, whatever we've gone through, we've come to an agreement that we had to work together to serve the citizens of the city of Cleveland. And I hope that the next director also comes in and has that same idea. I leave commissioners back here who have been here a long time and they understand their jobs. But it is time for me to turn it over to a younger person and get things done. So I, I appreciate that, sir, and thank you. So I, I appreciate that, sir, and, and thank you, uh, all of you for working with me and, uh, especially my friend, Michael Polensky. Thank you, sir.
All right, councilman Starr, you, you done, councilman Starr?
Yes, that's our chair.
All right. All right, let's go, uh, next we're gonna go to, uh, our councilman Joe Jones. We're gonna come back to Anthony Harrison.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate your leadership and I also wanna just take this opportunity, um, to, um, thank the Bibb administration for seeing there is an issue in terms of deficiency and looking forward and how we work together to improve this situation. To my colleagues who are sitting here, uh, you've heard some of the talk, uh, from both Casey and, uh, Mr. Polensky about the budget. And every year since I've been here, coming back to the council for the last four years, sitting here at this table, uh, I've been championing the need to improve public service in our communities. Uh, we have went down from the days of old when, when Mayor Mike White was the mayor of the city of Cleveland in terms of having great public service. Those were some good days. Coming back to the city of Cleveland, our public service has been diminished and diminished to such a degree that the citizens don't feel like they're getting the kind of service they deserve to get. Thus entered the election of Mayor Bibb winning this election. These citizens are sending a strong message to this mayor that we wanna have quality public service back in our city again. We deserve to have quality public service. Over the weekend, I spent part of my time talking to the president of Cleveland City Council. And while I was talking to the president of Cleveland City Council, I was pushing people's cars out of snow ditches in the community. And he can attest to that. And at the end of the day, um, I would make phone calls to, when I could get to Mr. Cox, but my main fellow was Mr. Mr. Scott during this, those snowstorm. And I wanna thank him for the streets that he was able to get at. Like some of my colleagues on this side of the table, they were inundated with phone calls about people not being able to get out of their streets to be able to go to work. Uh, those are very critical, uh, situations. And, um, and as we've heard the testimony here today, that there's a, a real breakdown in communications. Uh, there's a breakdown in terms of having the equipment that we need to have. And sitting here in this table, each budget period, I've asked a question over and over to the director, Mr. Cox, do you have what you need to get the work done? And I was told, yes, we have what we need, councilmen, to get our work done. Uh, we don't have what we need. I know we don't have what we need. And I know that sometimes, as in each administration, you need, you don't have those funds in place. But we do have opera dollars. And some of the suggestions I would, would make here today, just dealing with the snow plowing in, there's a number of other areas that we should work on. And first I'd just like to take my hat off to, um, to the distinguished lady who's here, uh, taking over, Mrs., uh, I, I wanna, I wanna say your name right. Is it T. Nguyen?
T. Nguyen.
T. Nguyen?
T. Nguyen.
T. Nguyen, did I say that right?
Yes.
Madam T. Nguyen, you, I take my hat off to you because you have a harrowing job. And the reason why you have that is that unfortunately we have not maintained and stayed equipped as a city over the space and time. We don't have enough equipment. We don't have the communication systems in place where our citizens can call in and get immediate assistance and help. So you have a lot of work to do and that's just the reality. And I'm not gonna sit here and pound you at the table because you inherited this. Your administration inherited all of what you dealing with right now and you're gonna have to retool and rebuild. And so with that being said, um, communications is important. I don't like calling Director Scott up and I don't like calling up Director Cox to deal with these issues because I haven't had to do that in the past when I was an elected official over twenty some years ago. It was automatic and was taken care of. You have to get your action line back in place, um, so that citizens will have the ability and capacity to be able to call in there because that's where a lot of our citizens are accustomed to calling. Um, so communications for not only the citizens, but we also need to have someone who will be on call for council people. So my suggestion is putting back online some available viable consistent system where our citizens, when they have issues, they can call in and deal with getting quality public service. And then someone who's dedicated and committed to always picking up the phone call and, um, handling public elected officials. And one of the people that was real sharp, unfortunately God has taken him, he's, he passed on, is Paul Alcantara. Uh, every time I would pick up the phone, Paul would pick that phone up. I don't care if he was on vacation, if he was swimming in the swimming pool, he would pick that phone up, answer that phone and get right back to me. And I just wanna thank Commissioner Scott and Commissioner Cox for being on top of it when I pick up, when they answer their phones and take care of the issues as well. The next issue is when we are doing the plowing, I got a great deal of phone calls from our senior citizens where they have been plowed in and they can't get out because the snowplow has plowed the, the end of their driveways and they, they're unable to get out. So I've had to, I've been, I've had to layer myself up and I've had to use my truck and my shovel to go and shovel them out. Uh, since that period of time, I've been working with my local development corporation to try to get resources to them so that they can go and do this work because it was just too much for me to do or take on myself. Um, so I would, I would suggest that in our department of senior citizens, their, their program that they have up in place, when you start to looking at that, it's not equipped neither. It doesn't have what it needs to have in place. Um, so you're gonna have to look at how you get someone up there to help our seniors because our senior citizens need help and that department is woily deficient, uh, in the ways of being able to help our senior citizens that are in a need. When it comes to, um, communications as relates to our citizens, uh, and we talked about this and this is really important and we have the technology, I don't know why we didn't do it, but we need to do it as we move forward. We need to make sure that we know when these snow events are going to come. So well in advance, this city knew when we were going to have this snow event. It, we should have been able to go out, post up, make phone calls, robo-call, news conferences to call the media together to tell the citizens, please take your vehicles off the street. Remove your vehicles from the street. And if you don't have your vehicles removed from the street, we're going to give you twenty four hours to do so and/or we're going to tow and ticket. Tow your cars, your vehicles and ticket them. When you have an event like this, having those number of cars on those streets can make the difference of life and death for someone not being able to get out of his or her house and home. There were streets on this weekend where we, we were unable, the plows came in with the first push, but because there were so many vehicles on the street, um, it was just a mess. And so even though the street had, had the first push, uh, people still were unable to get down those streets and navigate. Pre-preparation, it is, and I have asked the question and we've said at this table year in and year out concerning salt, purchasing salt. And we purchased a great deal of salt in the city of Cleveland, but I don't see the salt being layered on the street. And so I would ask the question, how much salt have we used thus far in, in the city of Cleveland?
Uh, Mr. Chairman to the councilman, we're budgeted for, to purchase twenty five, I mean forty thousand tons this year. In addition to that, we already had an inventory of twenty five thousand tons, so total that's sixty five thousand tons. Of that, we still have the purchase power to get another, I would suggest about twenty five thousand and we probably put about, I would say eighteen thousand on the street so far.
Eighteen thousand tons?
Tons, I'm sorry, eighteen thousand tons.
I, I can't follow after every truck and see if they're doing it, uh, but it would be nice to see them do it in my neighborhood because I, I, I do, I am out there and I do be, I am traveling up and down these streets, uh, but I will yield because you had something to say and I don't wanna cut you off.
There, I remember when you called about the salt trucks and not salting. We were in plow only mode that I described earlier. So when we're in plow only mode, plowing out on the first pass, we're not salting on the side street. That's what you saw.
One of the things I would, would suggest in terms of pre-preparation is to salt the streets. You know the snow's gonna come, you know, you ain't gonna get on those side streets. You should be salting them already. And so I don't know if that's a possibility to do that, but I will ask, uh, can't we pre-salt? We do see that happening in the, in the neighborhoods around us in Waltsville, we see it happening. We see it happening in Shaker. We also see it happening in Garfield. Can't comment on Maple, they're next to us, but I haven't looked at their streets. Can we do that?
Absolutely. On the main streets, we, we actually did pre-salt on the main streets in the head of this storm. Pre-salt in residential's are, is not cost effective in, 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 uh, in the city this large. You, you would use all of your salt, it would get covered over and, uh, I don't think we're equipped to do that.
I see. And so, I'm sorry, what was that?
Yeah. And then all of a sudden you, you also, you had to be careful. We had a lot of rain preceding the storm. So the timing of when you pre-salt becomes very important. So it doesn't wash away.
So I am glad to know that, that, um, um, Mrs. T. Nguyen, you, you are all looking at newer systems to put in place. I like the concept of what, um, uh, my colleague, uh, Mike Polensky stated about how we use even our retrofitting some of our garbage trucks as snow plows to help out. Uh, we also have a huge fleet of, uh, snow plows at the airport. Um, why were we not able to use some of those if they were available?
To the chair, to the councilman, um, the vehicles that, um, are used at the airport are substantially larger, um, than what we use here. If, if you stand next to a plow blade at the airport, um, y- you would see the difference in size between what they use and what the width of our streets are. Um, they also have acquired a lot of that equipment, um, through, uh, uh, federal FAA funds, um, so that they're not allowed to leave the airport. Correct.
I see. So just looking at, um, you know, if there was a possibility, all hands on deck when certainly when we are in a crisis in the city. So, uh, with that, I calculate we need ten new trucks. And, uh, my suggestion is we have opera funds and those funds need to be used at this point in time to bring the city back up in some level of public service stability. As you begin to make your way through the various different departments, you will see that we don't have the trucks. We don't have the kind of equipment that we need to have, it's not updated. Um, and, and that's the reason why we can't deliver public service to our citizens because we just don't have the means. Um, a year or so ago, uh, when it came with, um, being able to get vacant lots cut, um, I had a problem with getting a plastic cap that we didn't even have, uh, in our shop to be able to put over a weed whacker so that I can get a person out weed whacking. Stuff like that is something that we shouldn't even be talking about. We should already have it stocked, ready to go. Uh, and we need to make sure that we have, uh, the equipment in place for our men and women to do the work. Uh, we need to also look at the people that we got hired doing the work because that's gonna be critical. So you're gonna, you, you really, I, I really feel happy that you're here, but I feel sad for you too. Because you really need to have some ninjas on both sides of you that can go into these departments and clean house. And some of the people that I've had the opportunity, when I had to go and deal with it, cause I'm not a person that will just keep complaining on the table. I'll go out to your shop and take a look up under the hood. And what I saw, I wasn't pleased with at all. So whenever you wanna sit down with me and talk, I got oodles of information on how we can change our city and bring the kind of services to these citizens that so deserve it. So with that being said, Mr. Chairman, I thank you for your leadership, your commitment of putting this together here at the table. Uh, and I wanna thank the president of Cleveland City Council. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Councilman Jones. Really appreciate your, uh, comments. Anybody? Um, we are going next to, um, uh, Anthony Harrison, we'll come back to Kerry McCormick.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Chair. I, I apologize for pushing the on button too quickly. I'm a bit sore, uh, as we, as we all are from the, uh, the, the elbow drops from the top rope and the hit upside the heads and the kicking the butts that we all received uh, over these last few days. Um, but again, as we, as we've heard, we, we are thankful for the emails and the web submissions and the phone calls we receive from our residents because that helps us know what is happening and what is being done on the streets around our community. So I, you know, for those who are watching, we thank, thank them for, um, the, the pleasant calls and emails and the ones that were not so pleasant. So thank you. Um, and first and foremost, thank you to the workers. As we've all heard, you know, we are very appreciative, this body of those who are working, uh, day in and day out to clear these streets, those who are standing up twenty four hours a day, running on fumes to make sure that, uh, some individuals can get out their streets and they can get to work and they can move around as they need to. Well, yes, we know that some, uh, individuals, um, may not drive a big truck. They may drive a, a front wheel drive car, you know, who has to be the worker, who does not have an employer who is understanding due to the weather conditions that they cannot make it in. We've seen some from our colleagues have shared that folks have lost their jobs because of this. We've heard that individuals have been suspended, people who have gotten points because they couldn't make it to work. So in response to seventy two hour, uh, response is just, it's not working. It's not working. And, and I thank you all for your commitment today through the chair, uh, to the director, the chief and the commissioner, that you're going to look at how we, uh, bring down the time, uh, to better service these residential streets and not do within seventy two hours. Seventy two hours for many can be life or death, right? And so figuring out a better system in the short term, because some of the things we've heard are more long-term equipment buying. It takes time to process, it has to go through council, it has to, uh, issue a, a, a purchase order. You have to wait for the vehicle to ship in, you have to get it outfitted. So there's a lot to go into purchasing new vehicles over a period of time. But I, but I really hope that, which I, I really haven't heard today, is how we plan to address these situations through the chair, to the, to the three individuals here, the short term. The short term is what we all, I believe, want to hear. And in particular, for example, when we have, we heard about the tracker, but then we also have streets that has, within the seventy two hours, still have not been hit on the first pass, right? It is, is the communication, information from the first shift drivers not being correctly communicated to the second shift drivers and the second shift drivers are not communicating with the third shift drivers. So through the chair, to the, to the director and to the, to the, uh, COO and to our commissioner, can you, can you briefly help us understand for the transition in shifts that we're running twenty four hours a day? How is that information being communicated from the, from one shift to another when we've seen some streets that have not even received a first pass within the seventy two hour period, uh, of plowing? Mr. Director? To the chair?
If you don't mind, Mr. Chairman to the council.
Mr. Chairman to the council, we, we really stress shift to shift continuity between the three shifts. All of the activity of our drivers are, is communicated first via radio to our operations center. They track the activity and the completions of what that driver said they did or did not accomplish. That driver also will go in and have the same conversation with the foreman and the next shift driver. So they have pre-meetings, actually shift change meetings between the two. And they communicate, hey, I left off here or the truck's got this problem, you might wanna take it to the shop or, or I got it fixed and you don't have to worry about it. So they have that half an hour overlap between the shifts where they are supposed to communicate. Not to tell you that it's one hundred percent, I'm not gonna sit here and do that, okay? But I will tell you that is the policy and that is our practice and we continue to make that better.
Sure. Thank you through the chair, uh, to the commission. I appreciate that. And just your honesty, just to say, hey, listen, sometimes it don't always happen that way, but we really strive to make sure that it happens. I think that that's where that technology piece come in, right? We, we heard about and, and really, um, wanting to see some changes internally as relates to how reporting is done, not only from the residents or from council to you all about what streets needs to happen, but just internally, how the shifts are communicating, how the drivers are communicating with each other to ensure that nothing is missed, that no street is left behind, right? That everyone receives a first That everyone receives a first plow between that first 72-hour period, 48 to 72-hour period, and that we don't get these calls where a 72nd, West 72nd Place has been hit because they're confusing that with West 72nd Street, right? Or East, for example, East 72nd Place is also next door to East 72nd Street. Where we send these calls in, oh, the plow has been through there. Well, no, they've been down East 72nd Street, but they have not touched East 72nd Place. Just some of those nuances that I think that will make a difference in utilizing better technology, as we've heard from you three today, that you intend to, over this period, look at how we enhance those abilities to communicate. So through the chair, to you all, thank you. Thank you for that. One of the things that we've also heard through the chair is how we are communicating to our residents. We know that, you know, I don't do it often, but tweets and Snapchatting and Instagram stories and all this other ways that, you know, the city communicates to residents. I think that we have to, and I know cold red is there as well. What else do we have? We have the robocall system that goes out. But not everyone through the chair is, you know, on these social media platforms. Not everyone, people have maybe blocks on their phone for these robocalls or these potential spam that are calling their phones. But are we utilizing TV20 better? How are we utilizing TV20? Because a lot of our residents, they view in, they tune in to TV20 to get information. You remember the Public Access Channel back in the day, where you would click there to see what's coming to the neighborhood and what event is happening, right? Are we utilizing TV20 in a way to provide regular updates of where the plows are, what streets have received first pass, or, you know, or even just sharing some of the information that we've seen today, about six inches and above receives this type of treatment, four to six receives this, less than four, two inches, we only do this. So I think it would be helpful for the administration, not only for residents, but, you know, I appreciate the information for us, that we communicate that better. And I think TV20 is a very, 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 very useful tool that we have, that we can be able to articulate and share that information in a way that may not be received just on social media platforms or even within a robocall, because a person's only gonna listen to a robocall for so long, right? But if they have the ability to sit in their chair or sit at their table and turn on their TV, be able to get the information, that would be helpful. So through the chair, to the director, and to the commissioner, I would just like to hear, how are we utilizing TV20? And if we aren't, how can we better utilize that platform that we have to be able to share this information?
Mr. Chairman, to the councilman, you're absolutely right. We do not utilize TV20 in these snow events. And as the chief operating officer said, we, these are all the kind of suggestions that we like to hear and that we will add, and we will work on those processes. And I appreciate you bringing it to the forefront, because we need to have every suggestion, everything we can do to make sure our citizens know what we're doing and to make sure that they're comfortable in what we're doing. So we like to work with you guys to talk about these things, as Bonnie said. Okay, so no, to your question, no, we're not using Channel 20 as we could, as we could, okay?
Thank you, through the chair. I appreciate that, Director, and I look forward to, you know, pulling up the TV and, you know, and seeing regular updates on TV20 moving forward. Going back, just standing on the line of communication, through the director, the Operation Snowbird line, I also called that line. It was put on hold because I wanted to know what the resident who emailed me, you know, was talking about when they called. They said, listen, I called, either hung up, it didn't ring, right? Or then I called back and then I was put on hold, you know, and left there. So is that the only way, besides calling 664-2000, that residents can call to report if their street has been, has not been hit, or they think they need some salt on the street? What is that number?
Well, the number that we've given out is 664-2510. During the operation hours, that goes into 311. We try not to get people, everyone calling into operations center, because it's an operations center. And they're moving trucks, moving equipment, moving the things, and understanding what the communication is between the trucks. So we try not to get people coming in, calling in the Snowbird, because that just gets us responding to complaints rather than systematically going through our neighborhoods and doing what we should be doing. So that is, that is the number. And that, correct me if I'm wrong, Commissioner.
Oh, okay.
That's the number that goes into 311.
And thank you, that's the number.
That is correct. And let me just add, Mr. Chair, to the councilperson, on a non-snow event day, 311 receives anywhere from 200 to 300 calls a day. On a snow event, an epic snow event such as we've had the last two, we received 2,000 to 3,000 calls in that day. And we're fully staffed at seven, and I just wanted to give you some information on stats in terms of how many calls we received.
Sure, and through the chair, to the acting commissioner, that was gonna be my next question, is about the calls pre-stone versus during snow events? And the difference in those calls? I appreciate you providing us those numbers for us to have a better understanding about the level of calls that are coming into the center. And again, as we enter, we've heard from our colleagues, we entered the budget process, and maybe that's an area that we work with the administration to maybe increase the number of individuals who staff those phones and be able to take those calls. Mr. Chair, to the commissioner and to the director, I'll even go a step further. And, you know, the pandemic showed a lot of weaknesses in a lot of processes, not only within our city government, but across the US, across the world. And if these individuals who are charged with staffing the center to take these complaints from constituents can't do them from in this building or external buildings, have we thought about, through the chair to the director, a way that, you know, we can allow these, our staff to be able to take calls from home remotely? Have we looked at tablets and headsets and a program that they can have a function that they can work from home to receive these calls, and in fact, that they cannot get to work or they are plowed in themselves?
Commissioner, go ahead.
To Mr. Chair, to the councilperson, yes, we are looking at that as well. Absolutely, we're looking at being able to take calls from home as well. Keep in mind, too, that the call takers that work in 311 are union, and so we have to also look at the union rules regarding working from home and all of that, but we are looking into that as well.
Thank you.
On that point, Councilman.
Yes, sir.
Spencer has a point.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Councilman Harrison, I had a point on the question of the call center, but I don't want to interrupt your line of questioning.
Go ahead.
Okay. I think Councilman Harrison, through the chair, is raising really great points about, we all agree that there need, people need a number to call. And so in addition to the very helpful suggestions that he is making, I also wanted to throw out the idea that whatever standard the administration is gonna end up recommending in terms of how many hours it would take to clear streets after a snow event, maybe also we're recording when you first call, if this is within 48 hours of the initial snow, please call, you know, just so people even understand. People started calling our offices within 12 or 24 hours of the snow falling and saying, my street's not cleared. So I think, again, that consistency of when you do call, what do you hear? And I really look forward to the administration's leadership and recommendations for us in that regard. Thanks, Councilman Harrison.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Councilwoman Spencer. I mean, I agree. I think it's some sort of pre-recording, just like when you call another institution, you know, they give you some of that information as you call. In fact, if you call the main number, 664-2000, and it's around a trash bulk pickup, you get those recordings, right? You know, trash collection won't happen today, it'll be moved to the next day. Please hold for the representative to take your call. So I think that's a good, a good point. So I appreciate those answers. And just switching gears to safety, Mr. Chairman, if I could, you know, at our last meeting, you know, myself, Council Polynzic, and many other members, you know, had spoke with Acting Chief Drummond about the need to ticket vehicles on these streets that have been left from our first snowstorm. You know, I, in fact, you know, I'm often driving a ward, often out in the neighborhood, and I often turn in these, you know, vehicles that are on jacks, people fixing cars in the street and they've left them there, or cars that have flat tires and abandoned, you know, throughout the year. But, you know, there's always those few that get past us, right? And if we can't somehow seem to, through the chair, be able to ticket and tow all of the vehicles that are impeding the flow of the snow plows, but I drove some of the hill areas in my ward, in Euclid Green, in Gork Reburn. There's four cars that's full of snow that's been there, I know, for the last three weeks. And are we at least coordinating with safety for the areas that are the tight streets that is hard for the trucks to get down, and also the areas that have more hills, right? Because I think the flat streets, you know, are not as dangerous, dangerous as the hill areas trying to get up and come down to the main streets. And so if we could, I would like to, you know, to the chairman, to chairman of public safety, Mr. Polynzic, and in this committee, look at even if we explore just the areas that have hills, right? Those hard to, the hard to travel streets, those smaller streets that we have throughout the city. You know, if we can't seem to get to a lot of the cars that are just kind of routinely, you know, abandoned on the other residential streets. Have we, through the chair, to the director, has that been discussed? Is that something that we are doing, at least for the hill areas?
Mr. Chairman, to the council, no, it has not been discussed with me. I would defer to the chief to talk to, the chief of safety, to have that conversation and go from there.
Thank you, Director. And that's just a recommendation. And lastly, if I can, Mr. Chairman, you know, mutual aid, right? You know, we have mutual aid when it comes to safety forces and other things. What is our relationship with RTA, CMHA, Kyle County, which I know you're familiar with, and our other agencies around the city and the county? You know, sometime it's often, you know, hard to say when we need help, right? You know, we need a little help. You know, I think sometime that, you know, it's difficult for us as individuals, but maybe as a city to say we need help too as well. Are we working with, how are we working with RTA, through the chair, to the director and COO and the commissioner, with CMHA, RTA, and the county to help support us when we have these very large and fast snowfalls, you know, within the city, to even clear streets that are around their buildings, or clear streets that are around these stops, you know, in the neighborhoods? Or even the public housing areas that are within the city?
Mr. Chairman, to the councilman, we have, Chief Bonnie has, we have talked about how we get together with Downtown Cleveland Alliance, RTA, CMSD, CMHA, to talk about how we do this together. Because we have, everybody has the same, it's the same problem for all of us. So we are, as I said to the commissioner, we have to have an after-action meeting to understand what we did right, what we did wrong, what we need to do better, and what we need, all of these things we have to do. So to your point, the chief has already said that we're gonna put this meeting together, to have this conversation, so that we can work in concert with each other, so that we are working to maintain. In this last storm, we put about 30 laborers on to clear ADA ramps downtown and to clear bus stops where people couldn't get, you know, get off the bus or get on the bus. So we're working on things during the storm that we have to put in place that will be a process that we continue on to do. And to your point, Councilman Harrison, we need to make sure everybody's on the same page and that we're working together. So we hope to have that put together real soon.
Well, through the chair, to the director, thank you. I'm glad to hear that, that we are, you know, not too proud to beg or not too proud to say that we need help, right? I got a friend of mine who's a plumber, and he told me, he said, "Councilman, it ain't easy being a plumber. It ain't easy." And I understand it ain't easy being a public servant. Trust me, I know that. And so I commend you all for the work that you are doing to make sure that, you know, our city is taken care of. And, Mr. Chairman, I did say that, you know, I have one last point, I promise. You know, in a couple of weeks still, the All-Star Game will be here, the city of Cleveland, and Lord only knows if we will have another foot of snow fall within that period, right? And so that means we'll have an increased amount of folks in the city, in the neighborhoods, different events, and folks are moving around. And so I hope that we are really taking a hard look at some of these short-term things that we can put in place so that we are not caught with our pants down, you know, should we receive another foot or two of snow, you know, when we expect a very large event that'll be, that will, you know, the city will receive nationwide attention and that folks are not stuck and things can't go on as we would like them to do. In fact, the airport, you know, I received information from individuals just coming in from the airport. The runways are nice, but when you walk out of the baggage claim in the other areas, the sidewalks are full of snow. And so looking at, you know, how we, even with the airport, for folks who are traveling in those capacities as well, you know, I had a resident and also had someone who isn't a resident, but who lives within Kyle County, shared some information on how they, you know, got to Cleveland, and it was hard for them just to go from baggage claim to the sidewalk to get in their car, because all these mounds of snow are piled up along the sidewalks, just as we see in the neighborhoods as well. But the airport is a very small operation that they can be able to tend to those situations a little bit better than we can with all of the sidewalks in the main corridors that we have within the city. So I hope we are, you know, looking at that as well.
Mr. Chairman, just to that point, to the councilman, we have had several meetings with the NBA about snow removal for the All-Star Game, so we are working on that plan also. Matter of fact, we're out right now in downtown, looking at where snow is, where we need to maybe move some snow. Again, this is a worldwide event coming to Cleveland, and we're gonna work to make sure that we are ready for it, and we're gonna do what we have to do.
Thank you. And, Mr. Chairman, in closing, I just, I bring that up because that means more people to the city. Our residents are already here. We have, we have more than 20,000 residents, as we hear from Councilman McCormick, who live downtown, right? On top of another 20, 30,000 residents that are coming to the city, in the middle of snow-filled streets, cars parked, and, I mean, we got residents who will be traveling to other parts of the city, to the neighborhoods, to explore. People are staying in Airbnbs, people are staying with family and friends when they're coming here. I mean, we already have a task with the residents who live here, but to add thousands and thousands more people on top of that within the city, you know, I just, I bring it up to hope that we are, fully prepared, that we have a system in place where if our complaint takers can't get to work, that we have alternatives for them and so forth. So, Mr. Chairman, I'm in with that. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Councilman Harrison. We appreciate your comments. They were very helpful. Nobody even mentioned TV20 as a resource, so we do thank you for bringing that. Next, we got Councilman McCormick, and we'll come back with Councilwoman Maury.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Appreciate it. And I also want to take the opportunity to thank Director Cox for his years of service. When you started with the city, I was negative 16. So thank you for your service. And I will, I will echo the comments of my colleagues, chief and commissioners always, commissioner always kills it, he just does. That's just the bottom line. So appreciate him and his work. Just a couple of quick thoughts, Mr. Chair, and I will not belabor the feedback. I just checked with my office, and indeed, every, 100% of our calls were snow removal. And as council members know, very rarely are 100% of your intake all one issue. So that just kind of gives a snapshot from my office as well. Mr. Chairman, just a couple of quick thoughts and questions. Through the chair, to the chief, your point around a better system, I think, is really important. The bottom line in Cleveland, there's a culture to call your councilperson. So people will continue to call our offices on a wide variety of issues. I think what's important, though, Mr. Chairman, to the chief, and I hope you consider too, is where does it go from there? So while Director Cox and Commissioner Scott are wonderful and they're responsive, emailing a director directly is probably not the most efficient way to do business as a city. So is there a unified system that our offices can reach out to, whether it be online or otherwise, the interfaces with the work you're doing, so it all is going to one place, in one spot? Make your lives easier, make our lives easier. So again, Chairman, as we know, folks, and we welcome folks to call us, but ensuring the backend of that is a little bit more streamlined with that use of technology. One other point, Mr. Chair, and then I want to just briefly touch on another thought. And I know I've brought this up before, but I'm gonna say it again to this body. The parking situation is nuanced. I represent neighborhoods that do not have off-street parking anywhere. So I do not want the Cleveland Division of Police going through non-snow-banned streets and ticketing the hell out of my residents. So while that may make sense in some wards, it does not make sense in my wards. My residents literally have nowhere to go with their vehicles. My residents literally have nowhere to go with their vehicles. My neighborhoods are 150, 160 years old. They were built before vehicles were prominent. We don't have driveways. We don't have garages. Folks rely on on-street parking. So I just want to hammer that home again. And after this meeting, I'm going to be calling the chief and the district commander, because I had residents in Tremont who moved their cars diligently off of the snowband streets, but because there were snow between the curb and their vehicle, were ticketed for parking too far away from the curb, where they physically couldn't get to the curb. So I don't want the second district spending their time ticketing the heck out of my residents who are trying to do the right thing. So I understand that there's nuance there, and, and folks that don't move their cars or up on jacks, I understand all that, but I just want to caution that my residents, I got calls, "Hey, I did the right thing. I moved my car off a snowband street," and then got ticketed because there was a snow mound between the curb and my vehicle. So I just want to put that out there. Please don't run through neighborhoods that don't have driveways and garages and ticket every resident. Please don't do that. Because that's an added expense onto our residents, they're angry, they thought they did the right thing. So I just, just want to emphasize that. Mr. Chairman, to the, the chief, again, the last thing I, I want to just really hone in on, and I don't say this to say I told you so or anything like that, but five years ago, when we were going through the street replacement program, we talked about smart city technology. Unfortunately, that conversation never really matured where it should be. But one of the things that we were advocating for were smart nodes within our infrastructure in the city of Cleveland. Smart nodes can track snowfall, and they can tell you precisely where snow is falling, what parts of the city got hit the worst. Not only that, they do traffic flow, they do all sorts of monitoring that will help us deploy our city services better. So I say that to say, water under the bridge, but moving forward, please, and I know that Mayor Bibb has expressed, as well as his council, an interest in really investigating smart city technology, and how we can utilize that technology to better provide services. Will it take an initial investment, Mr. Chairman? I'm sure. But at the end of the day, it just feels like how we are implementing our service provision could be incredibly enhanced by using technology that gathers data to inform how we deploy our city services. Big fan of not just working harder, but working smarter. And really, a lot of this technology, other cities have used for, for years and years and years. Again, they can monitor water levels, they can monitor trash levels in a trash can, they can monitor air quality, snowfall, they can even monitor, you know, monitor pedestrian traffic to say, you know, "Hey, we need to increase our sidewalk space here." Of course, traffic flow, Mr. Chairman, is another great example of that. It can tell you where cars are, when they are, to help us deploy our safety resources. So I just say all of that, and that's a much larger conversation that, you know, three minutes after our timeline here, I'm not going to dive into, but I really hope that our council and the mayor's administration looks at how we can implement technology to collect data, to inform how we provide city services to our residents. And really, you know, you can get wonky, Mr. Chairman, about smart city technology and all that, but at the end of the day, what matters, as we all know, is did my road get plowed, are the trash cans in the park getting picked up, you know, is the traffic moving as, as best as it can? All of those basics that our residents care about, potholes, you know, all that kind of stuff, can be improved through the use of technology. You know this. I'm just saying that, you know, we brought this up half a decade ago, about how do we really emphasize the use of this type of technology to provide better services? And it was kind of brushed off, my words. So I really hope that with the new administration, we've got a great chairman here in municipal services, that we're looking at how can technology help us, not necessarily with a ton more resources, how can it make us more efficient to have better provision? So Chair to the chief, that's my only question. What is the agenda in 30 seconds, so I don't drive my colleagues crazy, but what is the approach to adopting technology to improve services in the city?
To the chair, to the councilman, I, I agree with you. If I could agree with you more than 100%, I would, but you're absolutely right. You know, adding, you know, the general philosophy that I can do things better by adding more equipment and more personnel is a philosophy, but if you utilize technology to more efficiently perform your duties with the equipment and the staff that you have, that's step one. I think when we start talking about buying equipment, you look at, at something like route optimization, and that will help you identify what size trucks you need and how you efficiently use those trucks. So I, I look forward to the conversation. I'm familiar with the nodes and the pavement, that's something that ODOT has used for years. So I'm, I'm familiar with that, but I agree with you, there's all sorts of opportunities and work smarter, not harder.
Thank you. And again, in, in closing, Mr. Chairman, to me, what that's about is Mrs. Smith gets her street plowed faster. It's about, I mean, it, this type of technology can lead to tangible results that our residents can touch and feel every single day. So I look forward to that conversation.
And, and if I may, there is a lot of information that the city already has, and I've been learning as, in the last three weeks, I've, I've learned a lot, that there is a lot of information. It's just, it all needs to talk to each other so that we can figure out how we can efficiently use that information.
And then how do we use that data, Mr. Chairman, to create a picture to better implement services? So, thank you, Mr. Chair.
All right. Thank you, Councilman McCormick. You brought up some great points, and we'll definitely be visiting that in the future. Next up, we have Councilwoman Rebecca Maury.
Actually, I'm going to yield to Councilwoman Spencer to ask a quick question.
Thank you, Councilwoman Maurer, for yielding the floor for one question with your permission, permission, Mr. Chair. I wanted to tag team off of Councilman McCormick's point about technology, and I know that no representative is here from the mayor's communications staff, but I wanted to point out through the chair that the city of Cleveland, the last social media post of any kind about snow removal status update was Saturday morning, February 5th, at 9:34 a.m. There were posts about approximately once every 24 hours, and there was what I would politely describe as radio silence, starting after 9:34 a.m. on Saturday morning. And so as our residents were asking for updates and questions, I encouraged them to follow the city on social media. Perhaps it was a mistake to assume that the city would reassure residents that plows were active, that equipment was on its way. Either way, I would respectfully request that that can be communicated to the mayor's office. I think technology can do a lot, equipment can do a lot, communication can sure do a lot. And this is, you know, that was, just seemed to be a simple thing to me, to reassure people that the system was at least still functioning. That was a missed opportunity. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilwoman Spencer. If it's okay through the chair, I'll, I'll get started with my questions. I have two quick, two quick ones, and then I want to get into a broader conversation. The first is a quick one to the 311 operators. Out of the 2,000 to 3,000 calls that you got, how many were actually answered and how many were unanswered?
So on Friday, we had 1,200 calls that came in directly to the 311 call center, and with the minimal staff that we had, we were able to answer over 500 of those calls. We also took the 2510 number, and we rerouted that back to the Division of Streets, and based on our reporting, over 1,000 calls came in on that telephone number. Unfortunately, we're not able to provide the number of how many were answered, because it's a different reporting system, once we transferred it out of the queue from 311.
Thank you. I would ask that the Division, the Department of Public Works, to the extent you're able to get that information about the percentage of answered calls that went over to Snowbird, I think that would be useful for all of us.
Mr. Chairman, Councilwoman. We're looking. Ms. Tilly, did you get that request?
I apologize. It's a, the request is for how, of the rebounded calls from 311 over the weekend that went to Public Works, how many were answered? And I'll just share for an example of volume. I had 50, 50 missed calls that were voicemails on, on my phone from over the weekend, so you multiply that across 17 council members. I would actually guess that we may be answered more. We had more volume coming into us that we were responding to over the weekend than 311, which is just something to keep in mind as we think about this communication. The second quick question is about, we have 3,000, so lane miles around the city. What is a average lane mile per hour that you would want out of your, the dump trucks, the main plowers in the city?
Commissioner.
Commissioner. In terms of lane miles per hour, I don't, I don't know that we have those calculations I can give you right here at this table. But I can, I can say to you that we have an expectation that our routes are being serviced. And they say, say, if we were salting only, I would expect those routes to be serviced four times, based on the amount of lane miles or miles that are on that route. And when we're plowing, I would say somewhere between two and a half to three times. So that's our expectation, but we don't calculate how many times per lane mile.
Thank you. I would, I would suggest that as we work to improve efficiency, that might be a key metric that we are, are looking at, because if we don't know how fast we are getting through those, those 320 lane miles, then we don't know how long it will take us to do four passes or two and a half passes, depending on the use of salt, right?
Well, the, the trucks are calibrated. It's salt-wise to put out so many pounds per lane mile, we do track that.
Okay.
But as far as speed, that, that varies.
I, I got you. Thank you. So after asking those two quick questions, I want to open up a broader conversation. We've had sort of two main veins of conversation here today. One is around communication from, from the mayor's office on this exact weekend, which I think Councilwoman Spencer's point was, certainly felt for me as well, that it felt like there was not adequate communication from the mayor. And then we've secondly had a, a conversation around long-term improvements. How are we going to implement GPS tracking, ways that we can better have a, have a larger fleet that's better serviced? But I want to spend my time talking specifically about the current system, about a third, a third lane, if you will, in between those two, about what exactly was happening over these, during this snow event, and how it was that streets got missed, and how it was that we, we currently plow the streets. And, and I want to dig into this because I think Chairman, Chairman Bishop, you made a fantastic point when you said that 94% number really hurt Clevelanders, because as a city, we already feel left behind. We already feel like we are getting second best. And when a resident in the city heard 94% of the streets had been done, and I understand that wasn't what you meant by that 94% number, but it's how it was interpreted, and they look out their window and they see that their street isn't done, they think, "I'm at the bottom of the barrel at the city at the bottom of the barrel." And that's why it hurt. That's why it hurt. And to recover from that hurt, you got to understand how it happened. So I've been spending my weekend going to the garages, talking with drivers, talking to the foremen, and I want to both share what I've learned with the residents, with those listening and tuning in, and also just ask some clarifying questions. So with the help of Deputy Clerk Moss, we've put up the map of the residential subsections, and this is actually Ward 12 turned sideways. I don't know if we can rotate it so that it's turned the right way. You might want to go Clerk Moss up to one of the wards that's the correct side, so that we can all look at it. But basically, what I, I want to first hit on is the point that when we say there's 292 residential subsections of the city of Cleveland, this is a map of what that residential subsection might look like, right?
It is representative of subsections in each ward.
Yeah. So, for instance, this is Ward 17, this is, this is up correct, this is the right way. So we can see that Ward 17 is split up into further numbers, and each one of those represents one of, one residential subsection, correct?
That's correct.
And so when we have our drivers come in after they've finished the mains and the arteries, and they are heading out, they, when, when we talk about doing residentials, we break them up by subsection, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
All right. So a driver comes in, and then, is it correct that they, they are using paper maps of these subsections?
Mr. Chairman, to the, are we using paper maps as we hand off? Are you talking about handing off?
Handing off to the driver that they take.
Actually, actually, to Mr. Chairman, to the council, they have booklets. They're, they're, these are all in a booklet that are covered, laminated, so, so they're sustainable, right?
Right. So they're, they're printed out?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, that's what I saw at the East 65th Garage, was packets at Ridge Road. They had individual pieces of paper with the maps that they're handing off. So within each subsection, there's no specified, like, most efficient route or anything like that, correct?
Mr. Chairman, to the council, there's no turn-by-turn, though, if that's what you're asking?
Yeah, absolutely. And so one of the things that we experienced in Ward 12 is, and that I, I bet every single member of council has, does everyone here, you all have like one section of your ward that just gets missed time after time after time, places that, cul-de-sacs that don't get done. Do I, is that fairly representative of other counts, of other wards as well? Everyone's distracted. It's okay. I think it is. I've, I've talked with a fair number of folks. And so I, I want to ask the question, is it possible that those areas are getting missed because we're using paper maps that don't fully label and list all the various turns of our 10,000 streets here in the city of Cleveland? Through the chair.
Chairman, to the, to the councilwoman, that, that, that's probably accurate.
Yeah.
We, as, as Commissioner said earlier, you know, transact, transacting between shifts, there's some things that can be missed, and I will not sit up and say we've done 100%, you know, of what we need to do. There are things that we miss, just human nature missing, right? It will happen. Yes, ma'am.
Absolutely. And, and look, I think that residents extended a lot of grace, you know, that the first time they're missed, and then the second and the third time that they're missed, they start calling me. And, and, you know, Commissioner Scott, you've heard, you've heard from me multiple times about areas in my ward that have been missed multiple times over, and it's these cul-de-sacs. It's, it's, you know, I had a husband and wife, the wife is nine months pregnant in a cul-de-sac where they aren't, they are fully snowed in, even though the, the main road that they're off of got done. So that's, that's kind of error number one, right? You, you've got twists and turns, they're getting missed because we're using paper maps. I also want to talk about error number two, in this storm in particular, which was that the snowfall continued for more than a day. It, we had, would you guys agree that there were trucks out plowing as of Thursday morning, after the first couple inches were down?
Yeah, yeah, to the chairman, to the councilwoman, yes, yes.
Yeah. And as they ticked off residential subsections on Thursday morning, those were then counted in the 94% completion number of the first pass, correct?
Mr. Chairman, to the councilwoman, I'm sure it was, yes.
Okay. And I just, I, I want to really dig into that because I think that was a key mistake that we made and, and that we miscommunicated to residents, because if you got a plow early on Thursday morning, midday Thursday, another eight inches, you know, came down after that. And I had residents calling me and saying, "My, my street hasn't been touched." And when I went over to Ridge Road, they looked at their sheet and they said, "Oh, that subsection's done. That's been done. It's not up for another day or two, because it was done early." And so as we were articulating these new plans, I would just ask through, through the chair, that we consider the, the length of the time that the snow is falling. You, you said early on, your 72 hours doesn't start ticking until the snow stops. Well, we kind of didn't hold ourselves even to that standard this time, because we started our clock on Thursday morning, and then we didn't hit those streets again, or they weren't up to be hit a second time, even though eight, 10 more inches had fallen. With that, I've spent a lot of time asking questions, and I, I want to just conclude by reiterating something that I think a lot of people here have said, which is thanks to the, your staff and to your drivers. And I'll tell you that when I went to the East 65th Garage, I learned a fantastic fact, which is that we make, we, we weld the frames for our plows here in the city of Cleveland. And apparently, we're one of the only cities to do that. Is that your understanding as well, through the chair?
Yes, yes, Mr. Chairman, to the councilwoman, yes.
And that's quite a skill set, to be welding those A-frames for the plows, correct?
Yes. Yeah, we, we're very proud of our, our welding and fabricating shop. They, they do amazing work, and that's work that we do in-house that we don't have to send out.
Absolutely. And for all the breakdowns that we had, something that never happened, this snowstorm or the last, was we didn't run out of plows. Those, if those plows... If those plows break, we had 20 spares over at that garage that could be put onto those vehicles. And I really, really look forward to the snowstorm where we are on it, we are communicating with residents. They know what to expect. It's not magic. It won't happen overnight. But we do get to these streets quickly. We're happy with the service. And we really get to celebrate and lift up the work of the garage, of the East 65th, of the welders over there, and really take pride throughout the entire process. And with that, Mr. Chairman, I conclude.
All right. Thank you, Councilwoman Maury. That was a great presentation, and you brought up some great points. All right, let's go over to Councilwoman Deborah Gray.
Good afternoon, everybody. Good afternoon, everybody. Thank you, Chair. I just have a few questions because I know I have to wind down for our next committee meeting. To Director or the Commissioner, or to anyone on the board, my concern was, even though it's not no one's fault, when Mother Nature's called, what happens, happens, per se. But due to that, we were asked to do robocalls the night before the storm. And then those robocalls, we had to state that the plow trucks was going to come out, and everyone be patient, stay home, don't come out, per se, because of the amount of snow that will fall. Unfortunately, a lot of people still needed to get out to take care of their business. But the next day, or the day after, when everyone woke up, I didn't go out, believe you me, I stayed on the entire weekend. But being a councilperson, the first time in this seat, this is the first time that I had to endure, you know, so many questions, so many calls, so many concerns. So when we came out the next day, there, you know, the streets were not plowed. There was nothing plowed. And prior to that robocall, we got the pushback of what happened. You sent a robocall out, each councilperson did, I assume. Then, and then you step outside, streets was not plowed at all. The main streets were, because I live in Ward 4. That's mine, that's my area. But as I went out throughout my neighborhood, I did not walk far because it was too much snow. But I stood out in front of my driveway because I actually shoveled my driveway myself. A lot of people that came down the street, or got down the street, or came out their homes on my street questioned what happened after they received the robocall. So I found myself babbling, babbling with no excuse, because I didn't have an answer due to the robocall. So due to that, could you give me an answer?
Well, Mr. Chairman, to the council lady, firstly, we apologize if your streets weren't done quick enough. But we were out there working 24 hours, seven days a week. And unfortunately, you know, the way we, our progressions are, have to be set up because there's not a, there's not a truck for every area.
Right.
So what we have to do is work systematically through the city. So sometimes people get service first, or let me say, before others. So, and I can't tell you exactly in your case what that is. I can look at it and see what your progression looks like.
Thank you.
To give you some, you know, some idea of what area will probably be serviced before the next one.
Right. Because on the Ward 4, it wasn't serviced at all. And I wasn't aware of that until I got some information throughout the community. And the second question, I just want to echo the rest of the council. Due to, due to people that need service with the elders, with singers, they do not have any assistance. And due to the city, in my ward, you know, we had the prior council who had his own trucks that serviced the elders. But now since we don't have that service at all, the elders especially need the service of their driveways plowed. And there's no additional service to help there. Is there any way that anything could be discussed with present council, or our council Bill, to see what type of service the city could give to the singers when they need their driveway plow? Because that is an area that will amount to a lot of financial service from the council end to assist them. Because I get calls every day, all day, because of the service they had prior to our former council.
Mr. Chair, to the Councilwoman, you know, that's as we move forward and as we have communications with the council people and the needs of the council people, how we communicate, that's a good topic. That is not necessarily something that just Public Works can address, but maybe some of the other divisions that we look at it as more holistically. And, you know, whether it's, you know, working with volunteer groups or whatnot, or the community development groups to address some of the disabled or the elderly that can't shovel their own driveway or get out of their driveway.
Okay, thank you. And my, oh, and my final question is, I echo the other councils too, due to tickling cars. Some cars don't have a driveway to drive in. So I do agree with McCormick stating that all cars that don't have a driveway to be, you know, to park in, and they have to park on the streets, there got to be another way to assist those cars that need to stay on the streets, per se. So I just, I'm just echoing him on that part. And my final question is that when the tow trucks do come down the street, unfortunately, they have to pile the snow up on the both ends of a driveway. But then it interferes with, it interferes with the cars coming out and driving up the street. So you have this pile of snow sticking out at least one to two inches out into the street because they continue to pile up. Is there any way that the tow truck can come back down the street and alleviate that problem? Because I had a lot of calls on that.
I think you're referring to the wind rolls up by the plow trucks?
Yes.
When they plow the streets?
Yes.
Yeah, that's, that's.
Curves, the driveways.
That's one of the unfortunate, Council lady, to the chair, that's one of the unfortunate things about heavy snow. It's got to go somewhere. And our plows do plow generally to the right.
Okay.
When they go up and down the street, and then go up one side and then down the other, plowing to the right.
Right.
Well, that puts the slow in the drive aprons. And that's an unfortunate consequence of service. And we try not to do that excessively. I tell my guys all the time, do not bury driveways. And try to, you know, be as gentle as that plower allow them to be in terms of residential areas. But on the main streets, they're rolling. And so we're moving up on the curb, trying to line it along the curb, but not throwing it up onto the sidewalks.
Okay. All right. All right. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Okay, thank you, Councilman Gray. I got a couple of quick questions for the administration. And Annie, I want the administration to get back to Annie with the answers. This is for Councilman Charles Slife. He had to travel, so I want to ask a few questions for him. Can we get a full accounting of equipment by service center, as well as a comparison of the separate service, in comparison to the separate service zones of the city? And also, he's also concerned about, he was watching the plow tracker. And again, we talked about the plow tracker sometimes could be a hindrance. But he said the plow tracker shows where plow trucks return quite often to the service center when they're doing subsections, and the subsections are not complete. And he was just concerned about how many trips that the plow trucks were going back and forth to the service center. Also, I also got an email about the floating the idea of tremendous storms, you know, these mega storms that we get. Is it possible, have we thought about like an emergency call-up system where we call up independent operators to say, okay, help us with certain subsections that are tricky? Do we, have we ever floated the idea of having like an on-call independent contractor to privatize and help us with our plow service? And also, the businesses that plow snow in the street, and when they're trying to service their private lot, and they plow snow in the street, is there ordinance that, and this is from Councilman Casey, is there ordinance that prohibits this practice? So that, I think that's all I have. If there are no other further questions from my colleagues, I hereby adjourn the Municipal Services and Properties Committee.